Ladies and gentlemen, it is 3:01 on Wednesday, September 22. I would like to call the order, the Tallahassee City Commission meeting. I want to thank you everybody for joining us here today. To start the meeting off right, I would like to invite the Reverend Dr. Chris Burney of the Greater St. Mark Primitive Baptist Church to join us at the podium for the invocation. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will please rise and join us for the invocation. Dr. Burney, thank you Reverend.
It's good to be here. As about his in prayer, O most gracious and eternal Father, we say thank you for this day allowing us to see a day that we've never seen before. O merciful Fathers, we come now to conduct the business of our city. We pray, O merciful Father, you be an honored guest here in our midst. We pray, O God, you would guide our hearts and our thoughts today, that you will continue to unite this community and make us one. This we ask, in your name we pray, Jesus the Christ, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the American flag is to my right. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend, thank you so much. Certainly appreciate you joining us today. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we do have a full schedule along with a public hearing on the proposed budget. So we are going to jump right into the meeting. First and foremost, I do know we have some agenda modifications. Mr. Manager, walk us through them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We have added the proclamation to item 5.01. Items 11.03, 11.04, and 11.05 have been added to your agenda, and 11.01 was removed from the agenda. Those are all of the agenda modifications.
All right, there's been a couple of questions about 11.01. Has it been pulled or has it been postponed? That's been the question that we have received, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. 11.01, there were some questions that were raised regarding some of the factual statements in the resolution, and I thought it would be good to take it back and do a second look and confirm those.
Excellent. So it has been pulled from the agenda?
Yes, it has been.
Okay, so if anyone is here that would like to speak on that particular item, we will not be taking any action tonight. There will be a time at the end of the meeting for unagended items, and of course, we would love to hear from each and every one of you. Just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that particular item that will not be heard tonight. Okay, any other modifications?
No, sir.
Alex, any questions for the manager on the modifications? All right. Rudy Saez, will you please join me, sir? We have one proclamation tonight, and it's my honor and privilege as the mayor of Tallahassee to present my friend Rudy this proclamation. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation, whereas each year the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of Hispanic Americans whose ancestry can be traced back to Spain, Central, and South America and the Caribbean. And whereas the celebration of Hispanic heritage started as a week-long celebration in 1968, 20 years later has expanded to dedicate a month recognizing the generations of Hispanic Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our society. And whereas the objectives of Hispanic Heritage Month are to create a greater awareness of Hispanic contributions to American culture, to illustrate the diversity of the Hispanic community, and to encourage a greater curiosity within young people about the rich history and cultural heritage of Hispanics. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month uplifts a cultural legacy that shares values rooted in rich traditions that harbor commitment to family and community, and perseverance to succeed and contribute to society. And whereas together we recognize the Hispanic community in the city of Tallahassee, whose love of family and willingness to share their heritage and traditions have made our city a better place to live. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a call to action to reaffirm our respect, appreciation, and support for Hispanic Americans, and to ensure that they, like all Americans, are afforded the same rights to pursue their dreams. Now therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month. And witness of each and every one of you dated today, September 22nd, 2021, and here to accept this proclamation is Mr. Rudy Saez, a board member of the North Florida Hispanic Association. Ms. Saez, it's my honor and privilege to present this to you. Excellent. Would you ask for a couple of comments?
Thank you, Mayor Daly. It's my honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of North Florida Spanish Association. This year, we celebrate the 28 years in our commuting, and we can't wait to resume the normal celebration with our yearly Spanish festival and dance. Thank you again.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, Rudy. Appreciate it. Manager, do we have any announcements before the board?
No, sir, we do not.
All right, Ms. Clerk, we will be taking citizen input on the agenda items, correct?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We'll take comments on agenda items. As the items come, we will call the speakers on those individual items. As you noted earlier, individuals for the public hearing will speak at the time of the public hearing publicly announced for 5:00. And if there are speakers who wish to speak on things not on tonight's agenda, they will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting and are unagended. And also, as you pointed out, that's where anyone who still wished to speak on 1101 would need to participate.
Excellent. Do we have any appearances before the City Commission by the governing entities?
No, sir, we do not.
We are on the consent agenda.
Move consent, Mr. Mayor.
First and foremost, has anything been pulled off of consent, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
All right, Commissioner Richardson has properly moved the consent agenda, seconded by the mayor pro tem. Any further comment on the consent agenda by the motion that has been made? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 11.02. Who will be handling 11.02?
Mayor, I will.
Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 11.02 is an item for your Science Advisory Committee. Recommendation is to reappoint two individuals, William Lanning and William Lesman, for their second term.
Then properly moved by the mayor, excuse me, by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. Commissioner Williams Cox, you've been recognized for comment.
Thank you. Mr. Treasurer Clerk, as we talked about in briefing, I have a little concern about this committee. Right now, there's a committee of two, the ones that are just being appointed. The others are supposed to be appointed by the county, but their terms expired maybe two years ago. And so my question is, is this committee actually functioning? And what has been the conversation from the county in feeling those positions?
Have not had the opportunity yet to get with the county on those. We'll follow up with them in that regard. This is a committee that's existed for quite some time, and I do believe functions. We had a couple of committees that actually were merged a number of years ago, so I will get a current update and bring that back to each of you as the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion on the table made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 11.03. Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, this item also calls for appointments to a committee, in this case, the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Recommendation is options 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. I do want to point out that there are a couple of distinctions, I think, for ease of action moving the whole group works, but a couple of them are appointments by individual commissioners, which we typically bring back to you for information. Obviously, if an individual commissioner has a person to appoint, they do so, but we'd like for you to have that information so you know the makeup of a committee also in this. So there are two of those. There is also an individual who is appointed by the full city commission. That recommended name is Cicely Brantley. And then there are two individuals who have been recommended by the commission itself. In this case, they're city appointees, county appointees, and then members of the commission recommend. So those five names are there and recommended for appointment.
All right, the recommended action is options 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Some move.
Second.
Then properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 11.04.
Item 11.04, Mayor, is an appointment to the Downtown Improvement Authority. A member recently had to resign from her seat, so staff is recommending Augustin Corbella to fill this vacancy. That's the recommendation.
All right, open it up for discussion.
Move acceptance.
Commissioner Porter?
Some moved.
Okay. Commissioner Porter made the motion. I'll give the second to the mayor pro tem. Any further discussion?
Sure. Just want to add, there's still another vacancy on the Downtown Improvement Authority, so if you know people who are interested, who would like to serve on this board, please contact staff and let them know.
Excellent. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion on the table made by Commissioner Porter, seconded by Commissioner Matlow, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 11.05. Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, this is the last item with appointments to city boards and committees. This one for the Citizens Police Review Board. This is simply bringing Commissioner Matlow's appointee, Adner Marshland, to fill a vacancy left by Luther Lee, who recently had to resign from his position. So that's the item for you. Again, I believe this is one that probably would not be your approval. Commissioner Matlow's made his appointment, but it's brought for information, and you may wish to ratify that.
All right, Commissioner Matlow, I'll look to you for comment.
Sure. Well, I just thank Mr. Marshland for his willingness to serve and get back to the people's business.
Mayor pro tem makes a motion for the appointment, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any other? Is that okay?
Yeah, do we need official action? That was the confusion.
I think we have taken action before, just simply to have it on the record. We have, and I think even the policy explains, that these are your appointments individually, but that they do come so that the whole commission and the communities.
Or ceremonially.
Ceremonially approved.
Move to accept the nomination.
There we go. Properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Commissioner Williams Cox?
Just a, not a question, but a request. Given the nature of this board, I would like to be made aware of vacancies when they occur, so that we, someone is not just walking up to me telling me that we got a vacancy and I don't know anything about it. Yeah, I'd known a week that we did, because I read the agenda, but I would like to be, like for us to know in advance that there are vacancies. I understand there's a second vacancy as well, correct?
Correct. My appointment to the board has resigned his position for personal reasons, and so I will be bringing the name at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, so that's just my only concern, given the nature of this special board, that we need to know when there are vacancies, when they occur.
Yep, sounds great. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We are on, there are no ordinances to be introduced into the record tonight. We're on Policy Formation and Direction, 13.01. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Let me invite our Director of Neighborhood Affairs, John Baker, to the podium. He's going to provide the presentation, but I'll set this up. This item presents the Griffin Heights Neighborhood First Plan. As you know, this is the third neighborhood plan to be developed through the city's Neighborhood Public Safety Initiative and the Neighborhood First Planning Process. These all take a lot of time, they take a lot of effort, they take effort on the part of the neighbors to come to an agreement on what they want their neighborhood to be like, and our staff has supported it the entire way. Mr. Baker and his team have been involved since day one. We know the Bond neighborhood was the first out of the gate, the Frenchtown neighborhood was second, followed closely by Griffin Heights. We're real proud of what we have. It does take a lot of agreement, you know, you don't always get everything you want, but ultimately, you come to an agreement as a group. And so this is something I think we can all be proud of, and I'd like Mr. Baker to share the highlights of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present the Griffin Heights Neighborhood First Plan to you. This evening, we have several residents from the neighborhood. We actually could have a Neighborhood Association meeting here tonight, but several residents from here just like to point out a few of them who have served as leaders in the process. We have Rodney Landers, who serves as a co-chair for the Community Action Team, Mr. Landers, Ms. Ally Taylor Grant, longtime Neighborhood Association president and co-chair, Mr. Kayla Norris Barber, president, and across over there, we have so many people who have served in so many capacity on the priority-era teams that were formed to bring this plan through. So glad to have them here with us. As the manager said, this is the third plan to be developed on the city's Neighborhood Safe Public Safety Initiative and using the Neighborhood First Planning Process. This is a very collaborative process. At the base of this process are our community partners, and foremost partner there is a Neighborhood Association if we're working with a community that has won. Area churches, area businesses, nonprofits that are involved in the area as well, because this process is built as a resident-led, resident-driven process. We live in a university town, and often we get to partner with our university. Neighborhood planning is one such effort in which we have had the opportunity to partner with the university. In Griffin Heights, we had both FAMU and FSU partnering with us, providing their skills and their student resources. Government partners, which include us, the city, members of the Public Safety Collective, and the Tallahassee Leon County Partners, all rally and support these neighbors to come up with solutions to the problems that address their neighborhood. So it's a very engaging process, and for the Griffin Heights, we started in the fall of 2018, and we were able to bring it in for Lanning in October of last year. As you can see, several meetings were held throughout the community, staff engaging with individuals, and I'll be remiss if I don't stop to acknowledge the president of Ms. Robin Weiner. Robin served as the Neighborhood Services Coordinator. She has left us for Green of Pastors, but Robin, we appreciate your help and your contribution to the team and helping us to develop this plan. So in this picture, several sessions, weekends, nights, working with the neighbors to develop the plan. As I said, students were very much involved. Here we have FSU students doing door-to-door canvassing to get information from neighbor regarding their preferences, as to what they'd like to see in the community. The picture on the right there on the screen, I just wanted to stop and say a thing or two about that. That's FSU students engaging youths in the neighborhood. And if you look in the plan, there is a section in this plan that engages the youths in the neighborhood, because we wanted to hear from them. A significant portion of Griffin Heights residents are youths, and therefore, their voice was very important to the process. In organizing the community to go through this process, we have a Community Action Team, the same leadership team that we form in other communities, and this is a broad-based group representing or having representative from the Neighborhood Association, area churches, businesses, and just local residents who wanted to be engaged in the process. For Griffin Heights, they were organized into two sub-area groups, the People Committee, and they focus on issues that were surrounding residents, well-being, health, and empowerment. Then another team focused on places, and they addressed issues related to the physical improvement of the neighborhood. Just want to walk you through on a very high level overview of the plan. The plan addresses five priority areas, and these are broad-based issue areas that the neighborhood said these are where our concern lie, and we then work through them. Here in Griffin Heights, we had economic development and resident empowerment, neighborhood safety and crime prevention, which is a requirement of this process, since it's a Neighborhood Public Safety Initiative, that all neighborhoods have to address neighborhood safety as a part of this effort, neighborhood infrastructure, and land use, community beautification, and funding. This was unique for the Griffin Heights community, and I'll talk a little bit more about why this was a unique priority area. On the economic development and resident empowerment, here, neighbors were concerned about access to capital to start a business in the community, homeownership, some of the standard issues that we have heard working with the other two communities so far, affordable, healthy food options, and as you know, there are no grocery store in Griffin Heights or close by. Windick C on Tarb Street closed, and so this is a challenge for the community. Lot of the members in the community, our residents, are seniors, so they were very much concerned about connections for them, being able to continue to engage in their community and not feeling isolated. The key projects from these priority areas, the acquisition of 1309 Alabama Street, which many of you have heard about at the IA Board, for a neighborhood food retail business, the establishment of a micro enterprise program, homeownership program that will bring up homeownership in the community, as well as the establishment of a family resource center there in the Griffin Heights community, a place-based nonprofit that brings providers into the community so people could access the services there. Next priority area, neighborhood safety and crime prevention. Here, residents were concerned about the involvement of residents in helping to address and to prevent crime, the relationship that they have or have experience with law enforcement, speeding on neighborhood street. You've been up Alabama Street, you'll know that that's a speed drag, drug activity, as well as loitering at some of the neighborhood convenience store. The issues are the key projects that the neighbors have put forward to address these issues was working on their neighborhood crime watch, enhancing that, making that more robust, involving eyes on the street and boots on the ground, working with TPD to host events in the community that would foster that type of positive relationship with law enforcement, and prioritizing street-for-street common, surveillance camera, actually, they do want surveillance camera there, and they want the possibility of a cops unit being located there in the neighborhood. Land use and infrastructure, here, their issues range anywhere from the underutilization of Riley Park, the amount of vacant lots within the community, and incompatible land use. They propose a number of key projects to address these, anywhere from looking at Alabama Street, a certain segment of that as a Main Street corridor, and changing the land use on that to neighborhood boundary. By the way, Mayor and Commissioners, you were able to deliver that to the community working with the planning department. We were able, a couple, few months ago, to change that to neighborhood boundary with the appropriate zoning, allowing limited commercial development on Alabama Street. Enhance stormwater facility, in other words, making these stormwater facility more than just stormwater facility, making them amenities for the community. On enhanced street lighting, when we developed this plan, we reached out to Electric, and they have already in their work program gone out to the community and address street lighting. Neighborhood beautification, again here, looking at the housing stock, dealing with excessive litter and dumping in the community, and a number of key projects from a housing facade program to litter campaign and expanding opportunities for residents to get involved in cleanup days. Funding, the big concern here was that unlike the other communities that are in NPSI, Griffin Heights is outside of the CRA, and this was one of the big concern for them, is there a dedicated funding source for them? Well, fortunately, in your budget that's coming up after this, you have already identified a dedicated funding source for them, so that sort of address a part of that, but they would like to be included in the CRA district and have an emphasis on grants and other type of funding that will help to advance the plan. In terms of the kickoff projects that they are requesting funding for, it comes up to $2.25 million, and projects are scattered, are not scattered, but project address the food issue, the purchase, and the renovation of 1309 Alabama Street, homeownership programs, anywhere from new construction to housing rehab program, homeownership programs, a micro enterprise program, and the family resource center. Again, that comes up to $2.25 million, and our recommendation as staff this afternoon is for you to accept the plan and provide funding for the kickoff projects. Working with housing and community resiliency out of their FY '21 budget, they were able to identify $250,000 that they would designate this community for some of their housing project, and we are looking to the budget that will be adopted this afternoon for that million dollar, that is $2 million that's reserved for Neighborhood First. Over the next four years, an additional $4.15 million to bring them in parity with the other neighborhoods that have been funded today. So with that said, I am going to segue and ask Mr. Landers and Mr. Barber to come and make brief remarks.
Mr. Baker, who is, gentlemen, I need to make sure both of y'all have filled out a speaker card as well. Excellent, great. Mr. Barber, lead us off. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Kayla Norris Barber, 527 West Brevard Street. This has been a long progress, process, and it's been a lot of work, but we appreciate all the work that our neighbors have done, and we especially appreciate the guidance from city staff. When we started this process, we knew what we wanted to do, but we didn't know where we were going to get funding for from, because the other neighborhoods were part of CRA. Griffin Heights is not in the CRA. But we appreciate the fact that you guys decided to allocate $2 million a year for the next four or five years from the American Rescue Plan, and we're excited about it, and we're looking forward to getting to work on implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Landers, thank you so much for joining us. You name and address for the record, please.
I'm Rodney Landers, 674 West Worth Avenue. Same house for 70 years. So I kind of know the area pretty good. I'm thankful to the commission and to the city staff for having a vision and initiative to have us come and do this work. It's been tough, it's been hard, there was contentious moments, there was a lot of coffee drinking and orange juice too much for me, little Malox along the way. But in the end, we've come and been able to craft this document for your consideration, and we expect that, and hope that you will honor it and go forward. I'd like to say this, even though this has nothing to do with the direct plan itself, I can tell you the city staff was absolutely wonderful to us. They were there always, they never guided us in any way that I felt was contentious to what we were trying to do, and I used to call Robin Weiner, who's leaving us, miss email, because every time we turned around, I turned around, I would see an email from Robin late at night, early in the morning, but I thank you, Robin. Ashley Edwards, we have a hotline together. Nonetheless, the only thing that I would say to this board is that this community for 80 years has not had any economic base. The main artery, which is Alabama Street, does not have one business on it. And until any community has economic security, it's going to be either... any community has economic security, it's going to be either without, or it's going to be before you all of the time asking for money. So, in view of the fact that this is a good start that we have here today, I would ask that, and I've talked to several of you on the board directly and individually about it, that as a part of the adoption of all of this, that policy won't be had today, but at least if we could find five good souls, starting with the mayor, to direct staff and executive team to at least have some directive, administrative directive, that allows for the citizens of the community to take part in the RFPs and the contracts that will be let as a result of your action today. We will go out and do the work now, the work now really begins, and so we'll go out and come back to you at some point in time by we of staff to say the work that we've done and hopefully be able to have that part of the economic security included in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, do we have one more speaker on this item?
Mayor, I do have one more speaker on this item, that's Ally Grant. Mayor, I don't know that I mentioned earlier in the meeting, but at this part, as other parts, speakers will have three minutes, and I'll turn on the light that's right there in front of you for...
Ms. Grant, thank you for joining us. You name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. I thank you for the privilege to be here on behalf of the Griffin Heights Neighborhood Association. We have labored continuously to try to get this work done, and we are at a point now where we're here to ask the indulgences and the support of each of you as Commissioners to do whatever you can to continue our work at the Griffin Heights Neighborhood.
Thank you.
I don't have any other speakers on this item, Mayor.
Excellent. We can open it up for discussion and for motions. I'll start it off by saying, congratulations. This is a long time coming, and I know that the neighborhood has worked extremely hard to get to this point. Tonight is just not a night to celebrate, it's actually a historic night. For the first time, and correct me if I am wrong, Mr. Manager and Mrs. Attorney, for the first time that I can remember, at least in the past 20 or 30 years, a neighborhood has a line item in the City of Tallahassee budget for their Neighborhood First program. It was mentioned earlier that this is not coming out of the CRA, this is in the City of Tallahassee budget. So not only are we going to approve the plan today, but at the public hearing tonight when we approve the budget, we will be solidifying our financial commitment as well. That is huge. Congratulations. Ashley Edwards, John Baker, your team has done a tremendous job, and I know that each one of us at individual times has had the opportunity to sit down with your team and with the neighborhood, and Ashley, I echo everything that's been said, you all have done a tremendous job. I also want to reassure everyone from the neighborhood that is here that this is the beginning of the process, the neighbors stay involved with the financial aspects of the plan as we move forward, just like we have done with the Bond Community as well, and so we are expecting the neighborhood to continuously step up to the plate, help guide the City of Tallahassee so that we can maximize every single penny of the plan and make sure that we could bring it to full fruition. Now, it was mentioned, and a great suggestion as well, Mr. Manager, I want you to... Mr. Manager, if you wouldn't mind weighing in as well, it was brought up regarding making sure that we have local vendors that are, you know, qualified, that live in the neighborhood, or the business might relocate to the neighborhood, participating in the RFP process, and if you wouldn't mind commenting on that, that'd be great. I understand the sentiments are, do we have a local preference in the RFP process? We do for Tallahassee, do we have for neighborhood-specific, and let's start the conversation from there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask our deputy city manager to come forward to elaborate some, and I want to recognize her for her participation in all these plans. This certainly is a boots-on-the-ground...
Great job.
...effort, and I think what Mr. Landers asked for, which is something that does happen and can happen, is the inclusion of a non-employee in, like the RFP ranking process. To the extent we need to use an RFP, RFQ, or one of those instruments to procure services, it is possible to include someone that's not part of our city staff, and certainly with your direction, we could do that where appropriate. And what I would like to ask the deputy city manager is to maybe, you know, and simply not to put you on the spot, we've got a number of line items and a number of efforts, do we anticipate the need to use an RFP process or something equivalent that we could incorporate what Mr. Landers has suggested?
We do. Some of the projects that have been identified by the neighborhood will require RFPs, and Mr. Landers mentioned wanting to participate on developing the criteria for that. Also, I think there was an interest in people who live in the neighborhood or operate businesses being able to compete for the business. Of course, that will be done through our existing procurement processes, and Mayor, as you mentioned, there's a preference already for local government and also for minority and women-owned businesses, and what they're asking for is additional consideration if the business is in the neighborhood. While that's not a part of an existing RFP process, it's not something that can't be considered. We do know if the funds are coming from a federal source, which some of them are, like the TDBG funds and those things, you can't add a criteria like that, criteria like that, but there may be an ability to do it. But as it currently exists, we believe there's a way for the neighborhood businesses to participate through local government, local business preference in a small minority-owned business.
Excellent. So, trying to anticipate moving forward, and I'm interested in hearing also from my colleagues, if there is a way to do it within our existing policy, that that will be the direction of the city in the RFP process to be able to provide the local preference for those businesses, and if not, is that an item that you'll be bringing back before us for consideration? If legally it can be done with non-federal or state monies?
If it's something that can be done, certainly we will, Mayor. One of the things we have to caution ourselves against, and it's something we're dealing with in the Frenchtown neighborhood, if the community helps develop the criteria, they can't turn around and bid on the contract where they built the criteria.
Correct.
So, they have to be careful about that, they want to have that kind of say and input in the process, so you can't write the criteria and then turn around and bid and expect to receive the contract. We are working with our legal office right now to consider something very similar for Frenchtown, it was really at the request of the neighborhood to have, to be real clear about that. So if there's an issue to bring forth and there's an opportunity to enhance the procurement process to allow that type of opportunity, we'll certainly be bringing it back.
Excellent. Thank you. And Mr. Baker, great presentation. Thank you. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for the work that you've done, and thank you, neighbors, because I visited with you as well, and I know that this was a lot of work, and you've done it, together you've done it. I too want to pile on with Mr. Landers' request, whatever we can do to make sure that the neighbors enjoy some of the fruits of the economic development that's going to occur would be most needed, down to, even down to landscaping, whatever the job is, if they don't, they may not own the business, but they can work for the business, let's see if we can make that happen, because we need to not allow people to come into our neighborhoods to make money and take it somewhere else, but allow the money to come into the neighborhood and recycle within the neighborhood. And I think we also need to make sure that we look at reentry programs, you know, we have folks who are coming back to the community, this would be a great opportunity for them to be able to do some of those things and be able to be fruitful citizens of the community and our city, and be able to just come back in earnest. And having said that, I would like to move the acceptance of staff recommendation with the additional caveats that we have just discussed, and I know that our city attorney's office will make sure we stay legal, the procurement office will make sure we stay legal, and deputy city manager and city manager will make sure we stay legal.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, I'm going to come right back to you to make that motion, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. I was just notified by the clerk that we made an error, there was one more public speaker whose card got mixed up and unengaged in items. So, Mr. Sims, if you'll please join us, you name and address for the record, let's finish out, and I'll take responsibility for this, let's take the public, and then I'll come right back to you for the motion, okay? Mr. Sims, you name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I'm Stanley Sims, 603 Martin Luther King Boulevard. I humbly accept your apology. I want to say this has been a lot of work, and I want to say thank you. The team to drive this force had to be unique. John Baker could deliver, because he has an understanding of the people. Ashley could understand our culture and our ways, even though she ain't our skin color, she our kin. I'd like to thank Ms. Barber, who did not micromanage, but looked over the shoulder. She don't talk it, she walk it. She knows that we just can't talk about helping people, that we must demonstrate, and Mr. City Manager, maybe you should join her one time down at Dee's Kitchen for some of them hard-fried chicken wings. It would be a pleasure for them to see you walk it like you talk it. I'm very happy today, because this commission is putting its money where its mouth is. Because anything that you really care about, you invest in. Ms. Grant, haven't seen you in a long time. Still on the battlefield. 15 years ago, that lady right there was talking about that dangerous Alabama corridor with those trees. I stood on your shoulder, we have sidewalks down that road now, Ms. Grant. Progress is coming. Hope is just around the curve. I can't see it, but I got friends in this community, white ones.
You're at 15 seconds.
That understands my heart, but my behavior does not match it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, do we have any other public comment on this item?
We do not.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, coming to you for the motion officially.
I move acceptance of staff recommendation with the addition of the conversation and request that we discussed.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. So, Madam Attorney, you want to put us in the proper posture for the motion?
The motion has been made and seconded, and you've had your discussion, so you can vote.
Let me rephrase that. Are we clear on the additional language that Commissioner Williams-Cox said I wholeheartedly support as well, has put into the motion? It's not just staff recommendation, but it's also the recommendation through the procurement process, correct?
Correct.
Right. So are we clear and on the same page?
Yes, as I understand it, to the extent that it is legally possible...
Of course.
...you would like for the residents of Griffin Heights to participate both in the procurement process, if possible, and/or to receive, be able to bid on those projects.
Well, if obviously, yeah, correct? Correct.
That's correct.
Right. Obviously, if it requires policy change, you'll have to bring it back to us, but under the current policy, if we could move in that direction, that is the intention of the motion, is that correct, Commissioner Williams?
That is the intent.
Okay. Excellent. Any other comment? Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to thank Ashley, Robin, John, this is the City of Tallahassee at its best. We talk a lot about soliciting public input and how we really get involved with neighborhoods, and to see this plan come back with literally drawings that children in the neighborhood did of what they want to see in their community, I don't think you can really go deeper than that, you know, this is from their hearts what they want to see their community be, and I think that was very powerful to be included, and I want to thank Mr. Landers and everybody involved in the neighborhood. This would not have happened without your advocacy. I know for years, you know, these conversations have been going, and you keep pushing and keep pushing to get government to do what it's supposed to do, and invest at the ground level in our neighborhoods, make sure there's economic security in our major roadway, so I want to thank you for your advocacy, and thank city staff for bringing it all together and giving us something, a fantastic product to vote on. Thank you.
Excellent. Any further comment? Commissioner Porter?
I just want to also thank the community or for their investment as well as staff. I'm really proud to be seeing this move forward. You know, I think that empowerment is when you have a direct link between public input and public financing, you know, expenditures and investment, and I think this is a great example of that, and I think it sets a great precedent for how we can move forward incorporating citizen input and making these plans a reality for our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's on table, it's been properly made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. Manager, we're on item number 13.02.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask Abina Ojutayo and Karen Jumminville to come forward, I'd like them to provide a brief presentation. This particular item is seeking your approval for a density bonus, a residential housing density bonus of up to 25% for certified affordable housing, and as you well know, affordable housing has been a priority of this commission, you've given clear direction. We've seen evidence of your decisions and policymaking through actions such as requested tonight that can lead to additional dwelling units that are certified affordable housing, not just, you know, appear to be affordable housing, these would be obligated to provide housing based on income qualifications. I'd also like to share, and I think Abina probably would say it too, is we've been tracking the number of dwelling units that meet this standard, and this puts us north of 1,300 units, and that's fluid, because some of them get completed and we keep moving on, but that is an extremely high number of new units in the pipe that we can point to as affordable housing. So we know your priorities are working, the actions that you've taken are working, and I'd like to take just a moment to describe what this process is, and then also the different elements of the growth management regulation. So Abina's first, and Karen will back clean up.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. It's always a pleasure to be before you. We'll keep this very brief, and of course, we'll answer any questions you may have. You will recall that we had a similar item in the past, and where we are right now, and Karen will go more into details of the land development code and, you know, why we are before you, but we're just excited to present another opportunity for you to support a project that meets your priority. You've set that target for us to facilitate and support the construction of new affordable housing units, and so what we're seeing, based on your leadership and some of the actions you've taken in the past, is that signal to the community to join in and to bring along new partnerships, and today's agenda item is such an item, we have a partnership that actually begins with the church, a local church that's been in our community for many, many years, owns a parcel adjacent to their church and has determined that they want to be part of this affordable housing challenge in our community, and so they're partnering with an established affordable housing development firm, Burt Song, as well as a local agency, Graceful Solutions, to come up with a strategy that only, not only brings in the units that are so desperately needed, but targets it at a very specific affordability level. What they're proposing is 96 units that will be reserved for those earning 30% to 60% of our area median income, which is the most desperately needed income bracket for affordable housing. But another interesting thing is that they recognize that their church is an asset and is an amenity for that area, and so part of their proposal includes utilizing their church facilities as part of the recreational and amenities that will be offered to the residents as well. So it's an interesting, unique partnership, we love to see it, and I think again, as the city manager has mentioned, our regulatory process is one of the most important ways that we can encourage this kind of development, and so here's an example where with your approval, we'll be able to give a blessing for them to begin this process. for them to begin this process, and it's still pretty early on. I'll pass it on to Karen to just explain specifically what the request is of you and how that fits into the rest of the development process.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is a request for a density bonus of up to 25% for this property here at 2521 Pecan Road. The existing zoning is on the site is MR1 medium density residential. It would allow 79 units on the site, and they're requesting approval to go up 20 additional units to 99 units. And our land development code does not allow the density bonus by right, but our comprehensive plan does allow bonuses of up to 25%. So that's why we're here tonight. The request is consistent with that comp plan provision, so it's something that we're requesting approval to move forward with. Just a few of the project next steps. This is very conceptual at this point in time. We don't have a site plan for it. So the next steps would be to come into growth management for a site plan review, environmental permitting, and the building permitting process. And through these processes, we would make sure that the site plan is consistent with all of our local and state regulatory standards. One last thing that I'd like to just mention is that Abena's team and my team in growth management are working on a draft Affordable Housing Incentive Ordinance to provide a little bit more structure to these types of requests and to codify some of the requirements and bring it to you as an ordinance so that we can put it in the land development code so that we don't come back site by site for these incentives requests. So we're looking forward to that. We'll be discussing it at the A-hack on Monday and then plan to bring it back for community conversation, public outreach, and then planning commission, and then your consideration. So with that, we'd recommend option one and are here to answer any questions.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, sir.
No public speakers?
Move option one, Mr. Mayor.
Second. It's been properly moved for option number one by Commissioner Richardson. I am going to take the second on this as the member of the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Certainly do appreciate the opportunity to serve. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mr. Mayor, do we have a speaker?
Yeah.
All right.
And I had a quick comment.
Okay. I'm going to ask everybody that's here to speak on items, please fill out a card now, and let's go ahead and hand them in. We're going to get to a point on each agenda item where we need to get into discussion, especially when a motion's already been made. It is highly unorthodox to have public comment while we have a sitting motion. We're going to do this now, but I'm asking everybody, please, go ahead and get your speaker cards in now if you'd like to speak on an item. Mr. Wilson, your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Wilson, 1816 O'Ford Drive, Tallahassee. I did fill out a card well before the meeting began.
Do we have that card on file?
I just received it, Mayor. We will address this matter between now and the next meeting.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, I need you to make sure that your team out front turns in all the cards so that we don't have this continuous issue on these items, okay?
I understand.
Mr. Wilson, let me apologize to you.
No problem, sir.
On behalf of the commission, that we did not have your card in on time, okay?
With your approval, I appreciate it.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to speak on behalf of Bishop Stewart and Pastor Alford were to be here today and wanted to speak with you on this. They had a family in the church that lost a child today, and they felt they had to be there instead of here. One of the things about this is there there really are no public facilities in that part of town. And what we're working with, we are going to contribute a, over half of our developer fee to work with the church to redo their gym, enhance the football field, put in a new playground, put in a new exercise room and walking trails, which will not only be available to the residents, but will be available to the community at large. They've been hosting basketball leagues, football leagues and tournaments, practice fields, and they want to be seen as a major community resource in in that part of the city. And working with Birdsong, I think we've got a good team to put a nice development. Our application goes into Florida Housing in October. We'll know in December whether we're funded or not, and then we'll proceed, we'll proceed from there. Also, want to thank the staff through the certification process. Design Works has been working with us on site plans and all kinds of stuff. Growth Management Team, it's been it's been a real effort to try to get this thing to this to this point. And this is geared to 60% of AMI or below, and there will be some 30% or below units in here as well that are reserved. So all of this is on the low-income side, and and we're looking at 96 units is probably the target for us, four buildings with 24 units in each. Thank you so much, appreciate you.
Thank you. And again, Mr. Wilson, I am sorry that we messed up your card. Mr. Clerk, are we good? Any more speakers on this item?
We're good, Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. I'm going to take the vote after we have comment from Commissioner Richardson. Anybody else that'd like to weigh in?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I just want to take this opportunity to thank Bill, oh, there he's still in the back. You know, Bill has been one of the stalwarts in our community in terms of seeking ways to provide affordable housing for our residents. And so, Bill, I want to thank you for that. I want to thank Alarm Church for what they are proposing here. As you all know, this is the former site of Marinatha School, Church and School. And and this is a part of our community. My daughter, my daughters attended creative preschool, which is just up the road on Tharp Street, and so I've watched this area of town over the years. And and I know that there are lots of residents in that area that are clamoring for this kind of development. And so we, this is our way of showing them that we've heard that, and we're thinking creatively. Our staff is certainly thinking creatively, thinking outside of the box on how we address this issue of affordable housing throughout our community, and particularly now in the northwestern quadrant of the city. And so I want to thank staff, Ms. Ojutayo, Ms. Jumanwall, for your creative thinking in terms of how we accomplish that objective to provide housing for those who are in need. As you all know, we did some ordinance modifications earlier that helped us in that regard in terms of the hotels that have closed and them being able to utilize those facilities for workforce and low-income housing as well. And so it shows that we're committed to providing housing for those who are in need in our community. And again, this is just another example of that. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much.
Excellent. Any other comment? Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Just briefly, I want to thank the people that Commissioner Richardson thanked, but this started with Bishop Stewart and Heidi Ottawa coming to the city with a offer and a request. And so this is what happens. This is where things go when citizens come and come not only with a with a problem, but they come with a solution. And so I want to thank them for coming forward and making themselves available to work to make this happen. This is what community empowerment looks like. So and thank you, Graceful Solutions and Birdsong, for being willing partners to help them fulfill what they sought out to do. So thank you all very much.
Excellent. Any other comments? See none. Motion on table is made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Rich, no, Commissioner Richardson, seconded by me, excuse me. Get in the right place. Okay. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number thirteen point oh three. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask Fire Chief Jerome Gaines to come forward.
You mean roll for him?
You can slow him down, but you can't stop him, Commissioners. Appreciate him being here tonight. This item, you'll recall this time last year in the budget development process, it really was the time to revise the fee for fire services in in light of COVID and the economic impact that it had. You delayed that implementation by a year, so it is scheduled to go into effect October 1st of this year. As part of that, of course, we know our fire department serves the entire county, including the unincorporated areas, and it was necessary to reach a revised interlocal agreement with Leon County. And we're seeking your approval of that revised agreement tonight. But I want the fire chief to give us just a little background so that we're well informed about the processes and what to look forward to. Fire Chief?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I will be brief. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. In 2020, this commission approved a resolution to increase the fire services fee assessment by 15% in FY '22, with subsequent increases of greater than one, one and a half percent or the CPI adjustment, whichever is greater through FY '25. In '21, you authorized the city manager to work with the county to conduct a joint fire services rate fee study to be completed. At your direction, the city manager and county administrator negotiated a proposed amendment to the fire services interlocal agreement that increases the county's contribution or its share of services, in which the county has opted to pay the increase in lieu of transferring the increase to the county residence. This agenda item includes the negotiated proposed amendment, initiates a joint fire services fee study, and provides you with an update on the rate study. We are seeking your approval to execute the proposed amendment to the fire services interlocal agreement with Leon County, which would allow us to complete the fire services fee study as directed in time for the FY '24 budget development process. And also, as a side note, when you chose to increase the rate by 15%, that will allow us to roll back some of the things that we implemented to deal with the deficit in FY[1287.15][1287.15]'21.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Anybody here that would like to comment? Let's open it up for questions and discussions amongst the Commissioners.
Move acceptance of options one and two.
Second.
Been properly moved, staff recommendation for options number one and number two by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number thirteen point oh four.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. I'll be rolling.
Feel better.
Feel better. Thirteen point oh four. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask Anna Guerra from our Strategic Innovation Department to come forward. She has staffed this item. You'll recall at your last meeting, you asked for an item to to come back at the request of Commissioner Porter. And so we've been able to, Anna and her team have been able to to get some background to share with you in the agenda item about things going on around the nation and in Florida, as well as a synopsis of how you could proceed with Legal Aid Foundation of Tallahassee executing a program if you desire. I'd like Anna to give us just a quick summary and background, and certainly we seek your direction on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Can you all hear me? No?
Just a little bit, Anna.
Yeah, pull it close.
Does that matter?
Good.
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you. Since April of this year, several discussions have taken place around resident ID programs. Our research staff have found similar programs throughout the country and a few here in Florida. Each program is established to meet specific community needs, but it really depends on the service provider's goals. There are a variety of ways to establish a program, and the models vary by community. Some cities choose to administer their own cards, but the most common model here in Florida is partnering with a outside agency who is willing to administer resident ID. At the last city commission meeting, you all directed us to bring back more information, working with Legal Aid on what this would look like locally. You can read more about that process in the agenda item, and we seek your direction.
Excellent. Nice. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak on the item? See none. Let's move it into discussion. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I definitely want to thank Christian and Anna and City Manager for working with me on this. It's been a lot of fun. I, you know, the benefits have been outlined. I don't want to belabor the point. I think that it's telling that we've seen this as a trend in other Florida cities who have seen success. I've spoken to Commissioners who've passed it, to the people who have administered it, and they have seen it not only as a great success in providing ID cards to people who need them, but also in connecting vulnerable residents with other services. I spoke to the, our police chief last night, who also wanted to give his support for moving forward with this, and I can answer any questions if if you all have any questions. I don't believe we have a representative in person from Legal Aid, but she did send some remarks about their their excitement in moving forward, having this discussion about about what this might look like locally. So I would like to, I mean, I don't know if there's other discussion. I would make the motion that we move with option one to authorize the city manager or designate and negotiate and execute a contract with with Legal Aid Foundation, option one.
So Commissioner Porter has moved to option number one. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
All right, there's a second for discussion by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox.
My discussion is, and I think I asked this question last time about, I know it's not government-backed, it's not a government ID, but is it something that can be used for vaccinations, other, and I'm looking at, looking at you, Anna, other things in the community that will help vulnerable citizens get services that, you know, they may not have the government backed ID, but something that will allow them to be able to do that.
I can answer that, and Anna, go ahead if you'd like.
Yeah, Anna can give you the broad brush of what different communities have used this for. I think that probably answers the question. It's a little bit of everything, frankly, then different communities use it differently. And I know that Carrie Litherlin wanted to be here. I think she probably could have pined about this as well. She just wasn't able to be here if she had a family emergency. But Anna can give you the kind of the scope of what different communities are using it for.
Yes. So early on, the, early on in 2021, the purpose was vaccinations. To get more specific, it really depends, the validity of the ID really depends on the service provider's willingness to recognize it. So it would be up to the administrator to kind of promote it locally.
Yeah. Could I just add to that?
Commissioner Porter.
If you don't mind, thank you. Yeah, so I can tell you that I've spoken to a lot of different community organizations with with Amber Tyne and with the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, with the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center and different service providers who have told and who have written emails in support to say that this is something that they do see directly benefiting people who they serve. This is one of the first steps to to this program. And a second step would be working with people, and this is part of what Legal Aid would be doing, to raise awareness about the program and get buy-in from other people. I've spoken to the chamber, I've spoken to the sheriff's office, I've spoken to FAMU Credit Union, FSU Credit Union about the, so it's a little bit, you know, you you get it started, and then you hope that it expands. The more people learn about it, the more they can recognize the ID and accept it. And so it doesn't automatically just become accepted by everyone. You've got to kind of put in some work to to raise that awareness.
Thank you for that additional information.
Mr. Williams-Cox.
So is it, is it, is it possible? I'm in support of it, but I'm just trying to make sure that we're not gonna, and you're right, it will probably catch on, but is it something that we can monitor and measure, you know, implement but monitor and measure to see if we're really getting the, what we're trying to get out of it?
Yeah, I mean, I think that is the, definitely the purpose of the the two-year pilot program. So it's something that I'm sure Legal Aid or any provider would not want to take it on if they don't feel like it's really benefiting the the communities they're serving, and I certainly wouldn't want to either. So I think we're definitely viewing this as a pilot program to see if we are really providing a legitimately meaningful service, you know, to to the residents and to the service providers.
Okay, so I would recommend that we modify the recommended action because the recommended action does not speak to a pilot. And I agree that we possibly, the recommended action is just to authorize the city manager to negotiate, execute a contract with Legal Aid Foundation to administer a resident ID program on behalf of the city for two years. But if it's, if we're going to do it as a pilot, I would look for a shorter period, you know, see what it looks like in six months and what it looks like in a year, because we're saying for two years. Now we're obligating across fiscal years, and I'm not sure if we can Now, we're obligating across fiscal years, and I'm not sure if we can, if we can really obligate a pilot across two fiscal years. And if we can, I'm fine with it, but I'm just wanting to get some clarity.
One point.
Down the way. Mr. Manager.
Okay. Commissioner Porter.
I believe that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that can be incorporated in the contract language when we negotiate the terms with Legal Aid. Is that your understanding, Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take a stab at those.
Absolutely.
Clearly, we can express this as a pilot, and Commissioner Williams-Cox, I think we could have check-in points, six months, a year. I think those all sound appropriate to us, that would give the city the opportunity to exit. I think that probably, just in, you know, contract construction, that's probably a wise move. If it's not happening as you might think it should, we could certainly include that in any negotiation. I've got to believe that would be amenable to Legal Aid. I hate to speak for them, but I've got to believe that would. Does that answer the questions?
It does, and thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. One would be, how would this be marketed? Commissioner Porter.
So, that is something that I have discussed with Legal Aid, but that would be their responsibility. So, what they have sort of roughly discussed with Christian and Anna for their plan would be to have, I believe, two kind of pop-up events a month that are coordinated with the other services that they provide, because they already help people get state-issued IDs.
Yeah.
And so, this would be incorporated with their other outreach events.
Okay. And then, the other question I had is, for them to use this for services in lieu of a driver's license or state ID, how do we communicate with those service providers that this is available and then they'd be willing to accept it in lieu of those other two types of identification?
Yes, so I believe what would follow this with Legal Aid would be a resolution passed by the city stating our support for this ID and our encouragement that other people recognize it as well, are saying that we will recognize it and that we encourage other businesses and providers to recognize it as well. Yes.
And I guess that will be a part of the six-month, year pilot, that if we don't have enough interest in using this ID card, then we would take another look at it. That would be a part of the evaluation during the pilot?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion. I think it's an innovative way to really help people living on the margins. So, I do think it makes sense to have a check-in at least one year in to make sure it's actually doing what, you know, we intended to do. So, I would support, you know, even just coming back with an update to the whole commission of the progress they made in the first year. But overall, it's a pilot program for a reason, to see if it works and is useful, and I support that.
Commissioner Porter.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to offer, maybe, you know, to, speaking to you, Commissioner Williams-Cox, about, you know, the pilot program. My only concern is what we mean exactly when we say that, because it's, they are intending to hire someone to administer this program, and it's difficult for almost any agency, I believe, including the city, to say, you know, after six months that we could, you know, stop funding this altogether. I'm not sure that that is something that Legal Aid would agree to, if they are thinking that they could lose funding in six months. The discussion, you know, that we've had, and I, you know, I could, I could contact Carrie. I wish she were here, but as I was thinking about it, I mean, I just don't think that it makes sense for them to sign up for something that could, you know, would be revoked. It's different to sort of get an update or something like that, but I wouldn't be comfortable just because I don't think they would be comfortable with something that they don't see at least a year-long to a two-year-long commitment.
All right. Commissioner Porter, I'm going to weigh in here as well. Anna, I've got a couple of questions. If you don't mind, you can come join us again. First of all, I'm in support of the program. I'm hesitant to move forward tonight. When we did the analysis and we looked at the other communities that have executed a similar-type program, what proportion of their population actually is using this program? For instance, when we talk about Palm Beach County or some of the other communities?
Two I can name off the top of my head. Palm Beach County, a population of 1.5 million. Last we checked was around 3,000 cards administered. Alachua, who's a little closer to our size, of 278,000. Last we checked was about 1,000 ID cards administered.
Okay, so it's a new concept, but in the other communities that have launched it, it is not, it's not being used more than, less than 1%?
That's what we've seen so far.
Okay. Not that that's a deterrent to me, but have we done an analysis in Leon County and have a ballpark idea of what the population that might even be interested in utilizing this service if it's launched in partnership?
We have not done that.
Okay. I would like a little bit more, again, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just not ready to move forward tonight. Also, did we take any consideration putting this service out to RFP?
I can answer that, Mr. Mayor. We did not. We're following up on the direction of the commission from the last meeting. It certainly, one approach, there probably a number of ways you can do it. You have the authority to do what's requested tonight. You could do a procurement process. You could do it as part of the CHSP process. You have a number of procurement options. In this case, we highlighted what was discussed at your last meeting.
Appreciate that. Maybe for consideration as well, we can look at different procurement options. The end goal is to put together a municipal identification program. Question is, how do we get from here to there? What does our population look like that we're trying to target? What does that marketing plan look like that we're trying to target? What do the services being provided look like? Who is going to provide the service, and how do we procure that service? I think that we should continue this conversation and bring more information back. I, for one, if we do determine that Legal Aid is the organization that would provide this service, and we're going to sole source, and they're going to do it to the best of their ability. I still haven't had a conversation with Legal Aid, and I don't know if you all have had that opportunity or not, but before we sign the $75,000 pilot program, I would like to at least engage with Legal Aid and know more about the program, have them actually submit the proposal so that we know in writing what this looks like and how we are moving forward. So, I think that we should postpone action tonight. We should bring this item back before the city commission, as we have more answers to these questions, and that's going to make me feel more comfortable moving forward with the program. If we're taking an up or down vote tonight, I'm afraid respectfully, I will not be able to support the motion on the table, but if we are open to a conversation, to bringing back more information, I could get there. Commissioner Porter, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you. Carrie did just text me. She is available to call in and answer questions, if we'd like to do that. As far as I know, they have submitted a written proposal to Christian and Anna about kind of what that rough draft would look like with plans like that. I will also just say, you know, I will move, I will go with the direction of the board. I have spent months working on this, talking to a lot of different people, as I know staff has as well, that would be, that are both willing and able to house this kind of program. We've talked to the Carney Center. We've talked to UPHS. We've talked to SPLC. We've talked to a lot of different nonprofits and organizations. Legal Aid not only is, has the example of doing this in other communities, but also has the existing relationships and trust, both of communities that would be best served by this program, as well as the people who we want to recognize the ID, such as law enforcement and other service providers. And as far as, you know, the small number of, relatively small number, I mean, those are some of the most vulnerable in our community. So, I mean, on the one sense, I'm happy it's not a super-large number. But I would say that from speaking firsthand with these people, that they see it as being a huge amenity to them, and is something that I've heard locally is supported by the service providers in town.
And Commissioner Porter, once again, let me tell you, I think that you have a good idea. I think that we are on to something. I do think that eventually this commission will wrap their arms around it and be able to move forward. From my own personal comfort level, moving forward with a sole-source contract when I haven't had a chance to speak with the entity, I'm just not quite there yet. Commissioner Williams-Cox and Commissioner Richardson.
I was going to say that I'm going to still support this, but I do, my level of comfort will come in the six-month check-in for the pilot and in the city attorney working with Legal Aid Foundation to develop a contract that can be authorized by the city manager to move forward. My level of comfort comes in knowing that six months in, we can see where we are. One year in, we can see where we are, and hopefully with the marketing, it will catch on. My level of discomfort is that Legal Aid is going to plan to hire someone to do this, and we're, I don't think we're in a position, and I know you're not asking this, but if they're going to hire someone, and that means that they are going to need funding to hire them, and I don't know where they're...
This is the funding. This is, it's included, it's all-inclusive.
Okay. So, that's where my, I guess I never understood that this was going to be, this money was going to be used to hire someone within Legal Aid to do this. I thought that Legal Aid was going to provide the service. However, they do their staffing was going to be separate and apart, that this was going to actually pay for the IDs.
It is.
Okay.
It's paying for everything in relation to administering the program, hosting the events, paying for the IDs. It's all-inclusive.
And I looked at Christian and Anna when you said that they have received a proposal from Legal Aid, and I'm getting the indication that they have not. So, can y'all speak to them?
So, we, yes, ma'am, thank you. We've received emails from Carrie, and she detailed some, she also detailed some examples of what clinics might look like, and she had, she had also expressed that she was going to develop a more formal proposal based on the direction tonight.
Again, I would love to have those conversations. First, determine whether we're going to sole source and not go to RFP, which is its own conversation, and then determine after seeing in writing what is being proposed and having those conversations, the expenditure of $75,000 to move forward. Again, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying I'm not comfortable this evening. Commissioner Richardson, if you were next in line?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to support this as well, Commissioner Porter, but I've got a couple of questions, and I don't want to keep asking questions here from the DAS, because I'm not sure that this is the appropriate time to do that. I think that it, these questions should have been asked after we have seen a proposal. In the proposal, much of this may have been addressed. But for instance, I had someone ask me, would someone from Gaston County be, would qualify for this card because Legal Aid serves Gaston County?
They don't.
Will, they don't serve Gaston County?
No, not Legal Aid, Legal Services of North Florida.
Okay. But that was a question that was asked of me. And then, who would qualify for this card? Are there age requirements, income requirements? Who exactly would?
Anyone. Anyone can get the card.
A 12-year-old could qualify for this?
Sure. A 12-year-old can get a state-issued ID too. I mean, that's something, as far as, you know, the sheriff's office prints out IDs to minors. But the idea is that no one, it's, you know, it does not limit, it's just like having a student ID or, you know, anyone can get it. There are people, this is, I didn't even bring up this angle, but, you know, people in LGBTQ+ community who use these cards to affirm their gender identity. So, there's a lot of different uses, and a lot of people can benefit from them.
I guess I'm kind of where the mayor is now. If we, you know, if we had a forum, a workshop in a couple of weeks, if, you know, we could get the proposal by then, where these kinds of questions are answered, I would feel more comfortable, Commissioner Porter. But generally, I do want to support it and will, if we could just, you know, have a more formal proposal. It sounds like Carrie is willing to do that or anticipates doing that based on the outcome of this evening's meeting. So, if we could give her that opportunity to do that.
Okay, so the motion that's still on the table, and I'm coming to you in just a second, Commissioner Porter, is option number one, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor. And then, Mayor pro temp.
Thank you. I do just want to reiterate, you know, Carrie is available. This, I think, is, her impression was, a lot of these details are what the, we're authorizing the city manager to do, is to negotiate these things. So, she is available to call. I forget even now what the motion is on the table. Is it option one with an update at six months or an update at a year?
So, you're going to change your motion for, to move forward with option number one with a check-in in six months? Commissioner Porter?
I can support that.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Williams-Cox, are you going to second that motion as well?
I will second it.
Okay. Mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that makes sense to me. I think we're not asking, I think, for companies to bid on a product. We're funding a nonprofit the same way we kind of have done homeless services as needs arise, and we had to make, you know, direct donations. We're not asking them, we're not going to operate the program. It's not going to be a City of Tallahassee program. It's going to be wholly in their court. That being said, to Mayor Daley's concerns about how many people will utilize it, you know, I think if there's 1,000 people who don't have an ID in town that need one and they're being served by that, that's a tremendous impact. But I do think we need to set that expectation, and I think if we can give the city manager, as he negotiates what this payment is for, for those benchmarks that we're looking to get feedback of how many people apply, how many agencies have accepted it in this report in six months to a year, I think that would give us the working details that it's being successful.
The motion on the table by Commissioner Porter, Commissioner Porter, let me make sure I get this straight, is for option number one with a check-in in six months, correct? Okay. And that is seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. Again, I'm going to respectfully vote against the motion this evening. I would like an answer on the RFP process for the $75,000 contract, and I would like to learn more about it before moving forward, but I think I've made myself clear. All those in favor of Commissioner Richardson?
Commissioner Porter, would you, would you, well, I guess when, so Carrie has said that she will do a formal proposal based on the outcome of this evening's meeting, because I still want to see a formal proposal, even if we approve this tonight. I'd like to see a full...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, a part of the issue, if I may just address your concern, I understand. This was the kind of thing where it's like the chicken and the egg, where they wanted to know if there was legitimate interest from the city before they invested a lot of resources and time developing, you know, a proposal. So, they have that, but definitely something that is negotiated with the city manager and fleshed out can be provided.
All right.
All those in favor, the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. It passes 4-1 with the mayor in dissent. All right, we are on item number 13.05. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, let me ask Devin Levens from our planning group to come forward. Devin and his team, along with Artie White, they've been working on gathering feedback for our South Side Action Plan, a priority of this commission. And so, they've been in the neighborhoods, they've been in the South Side. They're asking the opinions of those that live there of what they want to see in the South Side Action Plan, what's important to the communities. And we've got a lot of really good feedback... Action Plan, what's important to the communities. And we've got a lot of really good feedback. And we wanted to put this in front of you tonight to get your reaction. We're not asking for really any action other than to accept the report. But we, we want to express the priority, the importance, and continue to get feedback and frankly, refine how we communicate and articulate what we're trying to achieve on the South Side through the South Side Action Plan. It's big, it's comprehensive. We know we have more than a billion dollars of investment programmed on the South Side. That's kind of hard to say, frankly. It's kind of hard to express what that means and how that connects to people. And so, so how do we do that? So this, this update tonight is a status update. It will just kind of, you know, barely really scratch the surface, but we wanted to share it with you and, and get your reaction. So Devin, take it away.
Devin, good to see you.
Good to see you. How's everyone doing? Y'all doing well?
Doing great.
Doing good.
All right. Just so we get everybody back in the frame of mind of where the South Side Action Plan boundary is, I just wanted to throw the map up. I know we talked about how impactful it is to see the area before we start talking about the area. Again, just remember, this is about 22 square miles of our community within this area. So far, as of 9/13, so last week, we pulled our survey responses. And like City Manager said, we've been out in the community talking to folks. So far, we've hit up 577 surveys, whether it be paper copy or online. Folks are doing it both ways. About 68% of those have been residents of the South Side. And you'll see, these numbers don't equal up to 100% because people had options to say whether they were business on the South Side or where they attended church on the South Side, but they had some type of influence on the South Side. We've been working throughout COVID, as you know, and we had to come up with some unique ways to really get out there and get to the community and meet people where they're at. And we know that's really what we need to be doing with these types of projects is meeting folks in their communities. So one of the things we did was, we did a drive-through engagement. We actually did two of these. And you can see here, this was NIMSA Middle School. This was one of those ways that we could get out there, let people have the safety of being in their car, have masks on, but get that one-on-one attention that they were looking for as they went by booths along the way to talk to folks about things in the South Side and share their opinions or they want to see. We think that we got to do things along the way, too. We can't just, you know, kind of be waiting while we're working on this. We, we want to make sure that some kind of action is happening. So we did another unique way of getting out there, and we worked with the Town South Shopping Center. They had a vacant storefront that was, it had shutters over it, didn't look really good. You can kind of see here on the shoe time. That's kind of what it would have looked like before, but imagine shutters. We activated that space with just some information. We were hearing from the community, things they wanted to see in the community, and really just made it a space where people could walk by and see something going on rather than an empty storefront to get that area where they're like, hey, something could happen here. This is what you would have seen if you'd walked by the storefront, where we had been already, how many folks we have been talking to, some of those themes that were popping up, and then just some general statistics about the South Side, a lot to do with land, housing, those types of things. But three themes really keep coming up. And those themes that we want to keep focusing on are beautification, investment, engaging, engaging active citizens. Those are the things that we keep hearing over and over. Folks want to see it look better. They want investment to happen, and they want to be engaged and part of the process. And I think that's kind of where we're all at right now, right? We all want to be part of the process. This hasn't been happening without a lot of collaboration across the board. I want to acknowledge tonight, we have our team in the back back here. We have Olu, Jenna, Laurel, and Hannah. They've been directly part of our team working on this, but it's been other departments. As we got out there, got on the streets, we were seeing housing and community resiliency. They have an infill housing program right now, and some of those lots are on the South Side. Ben's team has also been helping us with a lot of the data that we've been finding for this. And they've showed up at our events. Underground utilities, we're getting out, we're seeing there's new sidewalks on the South Side, but it's hard for folks to see a lot of these things because they're big infrastructure projects, and unless you really are going by them, you may not notice them. Star Metro, right now, they're working on their Think Transit. They're looking for where their South Side hub's going to be. That's something they're starting to do engagement on. I think we need to follow that, see what's going on with Star Metro. Parks and Rec was a huge department and helped for us. What, things they did, we were looking to do pop-ups around the community. Well, the parks are a good place to do it, but you need to know when people are going to be there. And who knows that? Parks and Rec knows when the people will be there. Jake Gaither was one of the places we actually got to go out to. And at the golf course, if you haven't been, they've done a tremendous job with the amenities there. And it was nice to be able to spend some time there and talk to folks and hear what they had to say about the amenities happening at Jake Gaither. Our tempo office, you can see the picture here, we got Dr. Thomas with us right here. He let us put a box out to collect those hard copy surveys in the community. He'd roll that in and out for us daily, just so folks would know where it was at. And the storefront is actually right next to him. And again, they're in Town South. They're immersed right in the middle of the South Side. Our communications department with Allison, they've helped us with branding, helped us getting the message out, and they're helping these other departments as well. So I just want to be able to note that there's a lot of collaboration that's happening amongst city departments right now, and we're trying to help bring some of the light on to what everyone's doing while also moving this forward. You guys may know Blueprint has about 18 projects right now going on. I have Autumn here with me tonight, and I want her to talk briefly about one of the projects that they're working on.
Devin, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Blueprint has an amazing amount of work going on in the South Side. We have 18 projects that we're going to be implementing over the next five years. Those 18 projects bring $270 million worth of investment to the South Side. So we got a lot going on, and I look forward to sharing that at our Blueprint meeting next week. But I do want to give just a peek into one of those projects, which is the Orange Meridian Placemaking Project. Specifically, this project includes the construction of a new park south of Orange Avenue where that little blue blob is in the big yellow. And it also includes some stormwater improvements just south of the Town South Shopping Center. The first phase of this project has been the conceptualizing of the park, the new community park. And here's a perspective of it. This park represents some of the highest priority elements that we heard through our surveying, a half a mile walking trail, play and exercise equipment, designated spaces for food trucks, and fruit trees. Another perspective of the play area and the exercise equipment. It'll also include a restroom and lawn space. The next steps for this project to present this concept for IAB Board approval next week, we'll move right into design. That'll actually go pretty quickly, and I think we're going to be able to break ground on this park next summer.
So to kind of bring this all together, we have a lot of big projects going on right now that we can see in our community that are big. But what I want to bring us back to is that investment, beautification, and engaging active citizens. What are the projects that we can do moving forward that are tangible on the ground and that we can make an impact a lot quicker than some of these bigger projects that we know are underway, and start trying to focus on those, and then bring you all back updates as we move forward doing some of those types of projects?
Thank you, Devin.
All right. Thank you. Surely do appreciate that. And Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Do we have anyone here that'd like to publicly comment on this item? All right. Let's move forward for discussion and motions. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will move that we, I didn't get to the, is it for acceptance of the report? I would move that. What I wanted to mention, I'm a part of, I'm president of my neighborhood association, and we are a part of the Neighborhood Leadership Council through the South Side, South City Foundation. And one of the things that we talked about at our last meeting was this issue of illegal dumping. I brought it up to the city manager in our briefing the other day, and he says it happens all over the city. But it's particularly an issue on the South Side of town. I mean, we've got just a number of areas where people illegally dump or that, you know, there's areas of the neighborhoods that are just not maintained. And so I suggested to the, the neighborhood leadership that participates that we maybe make that, Devin, one of the issues in the South Side Action Plan that we address, is that, that whole issue of illegal dumping trash in neighborhoods. And that, I guess it's part of beautification as well. So if you could address that.
Absolutely. Devin, go ahead. But that's just something we're already looking at as well. I think you're right on with that, and we've heard it from the citizens. So we are incorporating that in.
Excellent.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Want to make a motion for option one?
Yes, yes. I'll move option one.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you, you know it's going to be good when everybody's wearing matching t-shirts. So we, we, we appreciate your work, and thank you for, for making that point, Commissioner Richardson. We get emails all the time about specific properties, and, and it's, it seems to be recurring. So anything we can do to address that, I heartily agree. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Seeing no, seeing no further comments. All those in favor, the motion on the table, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. Do we have any other business to come before us under policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to stand in recess for 20 minutes till the public hearing that's been publicly advertised at 5:00. We will come back to order then.
Okay.
It is 5:00. I am calling the City Commission publicly advertised hearing to order. It is a public hearing. We are on item number 15.01. Madam Attorney, or, excuse me, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll set this up. We will begin with a presentation from our Resource Management Group. As you know, this is the final step in the budget process where you will adopt the fiscal year '22 budget. We've scheduled a presentation by our Resource Management Director, Robert Wigan, and of course, the city attorney will walk us through the requisite steps of the process. So I'll, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wigan.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, appointed officials, and members of the public. As the city manager mentioned, this evening will be the second public hearing to adopt the fiscal year '22 operating and capital budget for the City of Tallahassee and the Downtown Improvement Authority. The budget is balanced. It addresses strategic plan goals. It provides an update to you on the Community Human Service Partnership that's in the second year of contract with, contracts with human service providers and agencies. And since our September 8th meeting, when we had the first public hearing, there have not been any changes to the budget. We have confirmed all aspects of the, the budget meet your expectations and directions. Unless there are any questions specifically, we can proceed with the three recommended actions. We'll be conducting a public hearing for water rate changes and new connection fee changes for water and wastewater, and adopt ordinance number 21 dash oh dash 29. We'll conduct a public hearing for the city and the Downtown Improvement Rate, Downtown Improvement Authority for their mileage rate and for their budgets. And then we'll ask you to approve authority for the city manager to enter into fiscal year '22 cap, uh, Community Human Service Partnership contracts. Unless there are any immediate questions, there's a directive by the state on procedures to follow in introducing each of these items.
Robert, thank you and your team for doing an absolutely amazing job on the proposed budget, and we certainly do appreciate it. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public speakers on item 15.01?
Mayor, we do. I think we'll take them at the direction of the city attorney as she walks them through our process, but we do have speakers both in person and virtual.
Excellent. All right. Madam Attorney, we have a script to follow to make sure that we do this correctly. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. As a part of this agenda item, there are two other recommended actions besides the approval of the mileage and budget of the city and the DIA. These are conducting the public hearing and approval of the water and wastewater rates, fees, and charges, and the approval of the FY '22 funding allocations for the human services and authorizing the city manager to enter into contracts with nonprofits. The latter taking place after the mileage and budget approvals. Before the budget, I'm sorry, before the budget public hearing begins, as a part of item 15.01, the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21 dash oh dash 29 will be conducted. Ordinance number 21 dash oh dash 29, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 21 dash 66, 21 dash 151, 21 dash 281, and 21 dash 402, City of Tallahassee Code relating to water and sewer, sewer service, including applicable fees, charges, and rates, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 21 dash oh dash 29, changing water and wastewater rates, fees, and charges.
Mayor, we do have speakers specifically on that item. If, Madam Attorney, is now the time to take those speakers?
Yes.
Let's move through the public comments.
Mayor, our first speaker on this is Barbara McLeod Brant. And if she will approach the podium, she will have three minutes for remarks. She'll be followed by Shelby Green. I will give you a heads up at two and a half.
Great to see you. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Barbara Brant. I live at 6749 Walden Circle, and I'm going to pull my mask down.
Ms. Brant, if you don't mind, could you try your best to keep it over your mouth for me? Thank you.
Okay. I've lived in Tallahassee for 45 years. I've always had City of Tallahassee electricity. I've been blessed or feel privileged that my utilities have never been cut off. I'm here to speak tonight because of I, the fact that I've worked in social services here in this community for a long time before I retired. I'm now 80 years old, so I can speak to the senior citizens of this community who are on fixed budgets. I worked for about four years with the homeless population, so I would like to speak on their behalf. I would also like to speak on the behalf of the veterans of this community. I doubt if any of them are here to speak. In my office, when I worked, I had a big sign. I tried to find it to bring tonight. It said, "Listen to the voices of the poor," and that's what I want you to do when you think about this item on the budget. The question I want to ask you quickly is, please raise your hand if you were living in this community when two people out in the Micasicki, Micasicki community passed away because their utilities were cut off and they froze to death. Were any of you living here then? Or were any, did any of you even know about this? Well, the week after that happened, I was working at Red Cross, and we were just stunned that something like that could happen in our community. We had a meeting that very week, and a few days later, we had another meeting. And the following week, we had somebody from the city to come. And that's how Project Share was born, because of those two people out in the Micasicki, Micasicki community passing away. I understand now there's so many people without utilities. It's just, it breaks my heart. At, prior to working at Red Cross, I worked with the school system and social work department. Back then, we didn't have cell phones. Oftentimes, a teacher would send me out to find out why Suzie or Johnny wasn't at school. Even back then, a lot of the times the children were not at school is because the utilities were off, they didn't have water, they couldn't wash the clothes for the children.
You have about 30 seconds remaining.
They didn't want their children sent home. They didn't want their children sent to school smelling bad. Please find another way. Please find another way rather than going up on our utilities. I'm speaking for the voices of the poor, and just winter's coming, and you just have to find another way.
Thank you so much for joining us. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker is Shelby Green.
Green, your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Shelby Green, and my address is 519 Ingleside Avenue. Unlike Ms. Barbara, I'm here to speak about the rate increase for our utility bill, specifically for the water and the wastewater fees. Since the utility moratorium ended, I have actively been helping residents in our community get connected to programs like Project Share, Our Florida, and the Light Heat Program offered through the agency. One woman that I've been working with, she just got her application sent in this past week. Her husband passed away two weeks ago, and she has to worry about getting her utility bill paid for, but also now she has to worry about paying for funeral arrangements. It's expensive. We're still in a pandemic. A lot of people, especially in marginalized communities like Black and low-income communities, have had to deal with paying for increases that they didn't expect, like funerals. And they're also behind on other things, like utility bills. And I've met a woman that I'm working with who had to pawn off her cellphone, her computer, and a ring to pay for her utility bill. This is only the first hearing for the budget. I think that you should look at, why are we increasing rates when we already have several fees on our utility bills already? And what is this money going towards? Can we not find another solution like Ms. Barbara mentioned? I think a lot of people, their most necessary bill is their utility bill. And if we're going to raise, raise rates on that, then that could hurt a lot of people. And I please hope that you consider that when you're voting today on the budget hearing and raising rates on people. And I'll also hope you consider about, why is it that the federal government gave us tens of millions of dollars for a strong, equitable recovery, and we still have upwards of 15,000 people that have lost utility power and have been disconnected? Why are we not using our budget to go towards people and not funding projects? So I'm also supporting the Tallahassee CAC's people budget and budgeting for people and hoping that we can find a different solution instead of raising rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, I'm going to- Mayor, I'm going to call our other speakers because there are several items on 1501. I believe those are the only two who wish to speak on the utility rate specifically, which is what's before us, but I do want to make sure that I don't miss anyone. I think the rest of these are going to speak on the larger budget issue, but I'm just going to look and make sure that's correct. Kayla Norris Barber on the budget, not on utility rates. Mary Ann DiArcangelius on the budget as well, yes. Stanley Sims on the budget. Delilah Pierre also on the budget. Michael McCoughlin on the budget. And we do have one individual connected virtually, Ariel Yonovi, but I think also they're on the budget, not on the water and sewer rate increase. So unless I have missed one, and I don't believe that I have, those are all of the speakers on the water sewer rate increase.
Madam Attorney.
At this time, it would be an opportunity for a motion and discussion.
Okay. And will you put us in the proper framework for the motion? The motion, I believe, is option number one, which is to conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number 21-0-29, changing water and wastewater rates, fees, and charges.
That is correct.
Okay.
Offered by staff.
Mayor.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson for option number one. That's recommended by staff. Seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. Open it up for discussion. Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask the City Manager if staff could talk about what that rate increase would look like for the average utility customer.
Yes, sir. Let me ask, Robert, we're going to come forward, but I believe I can answer it. As you probably know, in your ordinance today, it allows for CPI increase. This would be in addition to that, that would take effect for our water utility, that would take effect January 1, and it would represent approximately 85 cents per month per typical household.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further comment, discussion? Commissioner Williams Cox.
You said 85 cents?
Cents. Yes, ma'am. That's southern for cents. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
Motion on the table is for staff recommendation, option number one, properly made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Now for the approval process of the city and DIA millage rates and budgets. Mayor and Commissioners, there are certain things I need to read into the record, and then we'll take public comment on the millage rate and the proposed budget for the city and the Downtown Improvement Authority, as staff has just discussed with you. After you've heard the public comment and before you vote on the budget, there will be an opportunity for discussion of the proposed budget. This is the second and final public hearing on the fiscal year 2022 budget. This final hearing was advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat on Saturday, September 18, 2021, in compliance with Florida statutes 200.065. Neither the date of the first hearing, September 8, nor today's date conflicts with the county commission or school board meeting hearing dates. Again, I need to read the following statement into the record. The proposed final millage rate for fiscal year 2022 is 4.1 mils for the City of Tallahassee and 1 mil for the Downtown Improvement Authority, which is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.9867 by 3.30%. This tentative millage rate is equal to last year's rate of 4.1 mils. Attachment number one to the agenda item is resolution number 21-R-25, which states the percentage that the final millage rate is more than the rollback rate. Now is time for the public to speak on the city's millage rate and the proposed budget.
All right. Mr. Clerk, walk us through the public speakers, please.
Mayor, we do have a number of speakers, including one virtually. We'll take the individuals here in person first, starting with Kayla Norris Barber.
Barbara, your name and address for the record, please.
Kayla Norris Barber, 527 West Rivard Street. As I reviewed the budget summary that was published in the Democrat, I noticed that projected, I estimated budgeted revenues was 1.51, I'm sorry, $51.9 million. But the property tax levy on the TRIM notice was $54.7 million, which is a $2.8 million deficit. It would appear that there would be $2.8 million worth of government services that were left on the table. So I really just liked an explanation why the delta.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robert, I think you can help reconcile that for us.
I actually don't have that in front of me. If I could take a few minutes to look at that ad, we balanced the general fund budget, $161.8 million. Maybe a transfer to the general fund that selected budget add in.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow us the rest of the public comments, and Robert can help reconcile that uncertain, we can provide an answer.
Of course. Our next public speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Mary, excuse me, Mary Ann DiArcangelius, followed by Stanley Sims.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you all for your time. My name's Mary Ann DiArcangelius.
Might need to lead in just a little bit so we can hear you.
How's that?
There we go. Perfect.
Mea culpa.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Ann DiArcangelius. I live at 1306 Circle Drive. So I have looked over the budget, and there are some good things in there. I think there are ways we can improve it and do better by our citizens. For starters, I urge all of you to look at budget alternatives and forgive past due utility payments and not cut off utilities, especially, as Shelby Green mentioned, as winter is coming. We also have an opportunity to use vacant buildings as homeless shelters and create a renters' fund for emergency crises. I will point out that there was a landlord fund created, however, there was not a commensurate fund, to my knowledge, for renters. I support TCAC's Tallahassee Community Action Coalition People's Budget, which keeps financial management and city staff, executive growth planning the same. There is an expansion for parks and recreation. There is an expansion for utilities and also immigrant services. And in order to get from this, to get from this, there is a suggested reduction in police services. I support this in part because, according to a nationwide analysis, spending on a per person basis does not actually equal lower crime rates. In 2012, use the old data, spending was back down from a high of 412 per person to 389 per person. But crime rates didn't really have go up or down based on that. They went down a little bit, didn't have to do with cutting the budget. So we have shown that in the past, we've successfully cut the police budget and not seen crime go up. That year, it went down to just over 3,000 per 100,000 people overall and 388 violent crimes per 100,000 overall. This was nationwide. Also, law enforcement can be very sensitive.
You have about 30 seconds.
Thanks. I would like to point out that in 2015 alone, there was a $475,000 settlement paid out of city funds. I appreciate your time so much and hope that you strongly consider giving people their power, debts forgiven, keep the power on, whatever you can do, and please prevent the suffering of, for example, the homeless woman I met who, she has to call a phone to get a lifeline phone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stanley Sims is next, and then Michael McCoughlin.
Mr. Sims, your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Mayor. Again, my name is Stanley Sims, 603 Martin Luther King Boulevard. I want to say that there has been a lot of improvement in this budget when it comes to engaging in our community and so much as putting those dollars on the street. But my concern is about our city, first responders, workforce. Our guys, the least of these. I think that this budget should reflect an immediate $15 an hour for all of our employees. When I say all of our employees, our city employees in that group, for about four months ago, based on the data that I received from HR from a public records request, we're talking 203 city employees that make less than $12 an hour. So if we bring these 200-plus city employees up, we then have given them food security, possible home security, where they won't be homeless, they won't be threatened, or a little bit more comfortability to buy groceries, to pay their bills. How do I plan to pay for this? If you look at your market payroll, your top executives are one in the top 10 salaries across this nation. So I'm proposing a two-year memoriam on their salaries and take that salary savings and push it down. Now, this is nothing out of the blue. This is following the leadership of our city manager. He has deferred his raises year after year because he knows he makes a comfortable save. We're in the midst of a pandemic that is ever-changing. If you're making 200, I mean, if you're making $150,000 a year, I'm proposing anyone that makes over $150,000 a year, do not expect a 3%. You're blessed to have a job during a pandemic with benefits of $150,000. It is not a blessing to have a job during a pandemic when you're making less than $10 an hour. So let's push the blessings down and not mess with their health care and their benefit package. All of those can be adjusted, but I just want this commission to see the urgency of now in raising our lease of these to $15 an hour. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Michael McCoughlin, and then Delilah Pierre.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael McCoughlin. I live at 100 Kedee Street, apartment 205. As you know, through its budget, the city puts its money where its priorities are. And as they're for important, the city's budget reflects the basic needs of the people. If the budget passes as it stands today, the city will continue to fulfill, meet the basic needs of its most marginalized citizens. I know you are all aware of the impacts of such a budget because it's what we see throughout Tallahassee, increasing rates of homelessness and housing insecurity, increasing utility disconnections, as Shelby Green pointed out, increasing food insecurity, and increase in unnecessary medical expenses, which in turn all lead to an increase in crime and a subsequent increase in the police department's budget, which will increase the number of residents who are arrested and incarcerated, again, increasing the likelihood for them to re-enter the prison industrial complex, which in turn will result in demands for more increased police budgets. It doesn't solve the issue. As you can all imagine, this is a vicious cycle, yet this cycle can be broken by divesting from the police and investing instead in services that support the people's needs, better public transportation, placing sidewalks on all streets, particularly in the South Side, better parks, lower utility rates, and forgiveness of past due utilities, investing in programs to ensure food and nutritional security, supporting union jobs, embracing immigrant and refugee communities, developing programs to protect queer and trans youth, and building infrastructure to support Tallahasians experiencing homelessness. These are the sorts of spending that the people need. They're the sort of commitments we expect and deserve from our democratically elected government. And they're the priorities reflected in the Tallahassee Community Actions Committee's People Budget. So we need a budget built around the needs of the people. We need a people's budget. If you need ideas about what such a budget might look like, I encourage you to check out the work that the Tallahassee Community Action Committee has done of putting together a people's budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Delilah Pierre, and this will be our last speaker in person. We do have one Ariel Yonovi to connect with virtually.
Excellent. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, my name is Delilah Pierre. I will not be giving out my address because of the back law that I don't really know right now. I just wanted to speak both on, you know, obviously, what's happening around our city budget, the conversation kind of about the mileage and utility increase and everything that's going on and happening. And I also wanted to talk about needing more transparency in our conversations about the city budget and actually trying to get public input on a real, large-scale, really actually democratic manner, which I don't really feel like the city budget is right now. The city budget, of course, is proposed first by the city manager and then managed by a bunch of departments, as well as the city commission, but there's a lot of issues in our city commission's attempts to actually do serious outreach to get that information for people, so people can come and attend city budget meetings and CRA meetings. And especially the two CRA meetings recently, the one September 9, if I believe, and the one September 23, were taken off the TalGov calendar, to my knowledge, I could be wrong, with no notice to any citizens or the public. And while we were told we could speak and do public comment there, there was no opportunity for public comment on September 9, and I don't know if there's going to be opportunity for public comment on September 23, especially because that was removed from the agenda. We need to be more clear about our budget. We need to be more clear about when people can come out and speak, when we can have public comments and public forums in Tallahassee. And we need to stop worrying about things like whether it's only an 85%, 85 cent increase and start thinking about the fact that a lot of people can't even afford that 85 cent increase. They can't afford their utilities right now. They can't afford to stay in their houses right now. So we're acting like this is just a small incremental change when people are already at the point of their backs breaking. They can't afford to live. They can't afford to take a shower. They can't afford to eat. I worked for the Department of Economic Opportunity. I saw how many people lack access to actual unemployment benefits in our city and our state. I saw how difficult it is for people to have access to these basic rights and needs that they deserve. These are the incompetence and malicious intent of the Florida government, and it's wrong. That's why we created our People's Budget, and that's why I urge you to really look at it and really see it for next year. I know you can't change the entirety of the budget in a month. I know you can't make huge changes in a month, but I do think that it's ridiculous that people in the city don't have proper housing, that people in the city are looking to their next meal, that people in the city who have been looking for jobs for years but can't find one that pays a living wage.
You have about 15 seconds.
Are being pushed out because police need more money. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Ariel Yonovi. I think I do see a connection, so we can hear you, and you may begin.
All right. Hello, my name is Ariel Yonovi. I use she-day pronouns, and I am here to uplift everything that was said before me. It's beautiful. We cannot add, even though it's 85 cents, people already cannot live in this pandemic, and research has shown that even a one- or a two-bedroom in the 50 states we live in, nobody can afford that. So all people solely by the fact that we are alive and exist have the right to food, shelter, safety, education, health care, and a healthy environment. It is a right. We don't have to earn these things. I speak in approval of TCAC's People's Budget, as I believe this is a huge step in making sure everyone's needs are acknowledged. Very important, everyone's needs are acknowledged and met. The safest communities do not have most, the safest communities do not have more cops. They have more resources. That's all we need, it's just the resources. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
No, sir. That's the last speaker on this item.
Is there anybody else here that'd like to comment on the budget as proposed? All right. All right. Joseph, if you'd like to speak, will you please fill out a card? You can do it after you speak, sir. Come on. Come on down.
Mayor, I do have a card for him. I'll add the budget to it.
Excellent. Mr. Teague, great to see you. Name and address for the record, please. This is on the budget as proposed.
My name is Joseph Teague. I will not address my address for the safety. You guys have solar panels, right?
I can barely hear you, sir.
You guys have solar panels, right?
Uh huh.
Why don't we go green environment, where it takes the customers get their solar electricity less, where it goes backwards, where they use the solar, the sun to give them electricity, so we don't have to spend more money on electricity. So you gotta bill two hundred dollars, but next month it goes to a hundred, then it goes to another, but then it goes backwards and it feeds you, 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 where everybody has solar environment, green environment. Why don't we go to green environment with solar? I don't know how much you guys have solar, but I know you guys did a video a while back ago about solar panels. Aren't there cuts where they could put solar panels on the roofs or in the backyard so they get green environment? You could put wells into the ground. If you lived in a country, have a system, a septic, where it cleans the water. So we could put more money back in our communities instead of making the citizens pay more for the utilities. It'll cut like fifty percent, so everybody will have at least fifty percent less to pay, and it goes right back into our community. Let me ask you this, the power right here, is it run by solar?
It is, actually. We're the only city in the entire state of Florida that runs every municipal building one hundred percent off of solar, and that's something we're very proud of.
So if that is, is your meter going backwards?
I'm not the electrician.
I'm just saying, because, let me put it, let me put it this way. If y'all paying getting free electricity right here, well, this electricity could go to the neighbor next door, the neighbor next door, like a domino effect.
Yeah, I think you got great ideas, Joseph, and we've got, we do have the solar program, both for businesses and residential. Maybe if we can have somebody follow up with Joseph, walk him through the program that might answer some questions, and we'll go from there.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Who? Thanks, man. All right. Any other speakers on the proposed budget? Okay. Mr. Manager, let me turn it over to you and your team to answer Mr. Barber's question. Robert?
Robert will answer it. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, City Manager. I got a little bit excited. Thank you for the good eyes, Mr. Barber. We, when we advertise, we advertise at a hundred percent of the property value based on value adjustment board adjustments and/or early payment from escrow accounts for households. We can only collect up to ninety-five percent of the total value of the millage rate. That's the two-point-eight million dollar difference that we advertise.
Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it. Okay. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point in time, we need to allow public input on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed millage rate, which is one mil, and the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed budget of three hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and eleven dollars as presented on September eighth. This hearing for the Downtown Improvement Authority has been advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat on Saturday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, in compliance with Florida statute, section two hundred point zero six five.
Okay. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clark, on the Downtown Improvement Authority's final proposed millage rate or final proposed budget?
We do not, Mayor.
Do we have anybody here that's interested in testifying on behalf of the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed millage rate or proposed budget? Make sure everybody has the opportunity. Okay. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Wigan has stated, there are no adjustments to be made this evening. We'll now move on. At this point, we would need a motion for the approval of the city's final millage rate of four-point-one mils as reflected in resolution twenty-one R dash twenty-five, the title of which reads as follows. Resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-five, a resolution establishing the millage rate for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-one, and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-two, as four-point-one mils for the city of Tallahassee and one mil for the Downtown Improvement Authority, which is greater than the aggregate rollback rate of three-point-nine-eight-six-seven by three-point-three-zero percent, and providing an effective date.
Excellent. May I have a motion for the approval of the final millage rate as stated in resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-five?
So move. Second?
Been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Open it up for discussion. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to briefly thank all the public speakers that came today to participate in this process. This is obviously the final vote we'll have on this proposed budget that's been worked on over the past year, but I do want to encourage everybody to engage early and often. The beginnings of our budget conversations for the next fiscal year are right around the corner, and we debate lively throughout the year of what changes we want to make before we get to this point, so I did just want to extend that invitation to the public.
Excellent. Any other comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table made by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox and seconded by Commissioner Jack Porter for resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-five, establishing our millage rate at four-point-one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Madam Attorney.
The next step, step eight, is to approve the city's final fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget as reflected in the appropriations resolution twenty-one dash R dash twenty-six, the title of which reads as follows. Resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-six, a resolution adopting the operating and capital budgets for the city of Tallahassee and the operating budget for the Downtown Improvement Authority for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-one, and ending September thirty of twenty twenty-two, designating the sources of revenue and set appropriations, and providing an effective date, and which reflects the changes to the proposed budgets that were previously approved by the city commission.
All right. May I have a motion for the approval of the twenty-twenty-two budget as reflected in resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-six?
So move.
Seconded. Been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Curtis Richardson, and we are now at discussion. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank staff for all the work that has gone into this. I cannot even imagine how much work. I really have a lot of faith knowing that your team has worked on this, and I did want to say thank you so much for that. I also want to extend to the people who speak and, you know, to thank you for being here and for raising these issues on a consistent basis and for speaking up for the poor and the vulnerable in this community who definitely need people speaking up for them. I do not think that this budget is perfect. I think it falls very short of meeting every need that we want to meet. That being said, you know, I will be supporting this budget, but I do think there's a lot of room for improvement. I do think that for many, many years, we have thought about our budgets in a certain way that do not always produce the results that we need, and that there is a failure in many ways in the way that our governments at large engage with people and include them in these discussions. These are very, very difficult, complex documents and formulas and rates and all, I mean, it's, and I do think there are a lot of ways that we can use different tools, whether it's participatory budgeting or different ways to engage people. It's very intimidating and it's very difficult. And so I definitely want to be a resource for helping people become more engaged and understand the process early on so that we can incorporate that feedback, and I think that is, that there is a lot of room for improvement in that. And so I want to thank you for being here and for calling us to that standard and make sure that you know that your work is recognized. Thank you.
Commissioner Diane Williams Cox.
I want to also thank staff for the work that you've done here. I have personal testimonies of people who walked up to me in a grocery store to tell me what this budget would mean to them, city employees, and what it would mean to their families. And I just want you to know that the work we do here, it does permeate throughout our city. And unfortunately, we do not have enough to meet all of our needs, but we try to do the very best, and I think that this budget, along with the federal dollars that we receive, have been put into places that we can, where we can put them. All dollars can't be used for everything. Sometimes they're earmarked for how they can be used, and so thank you all for knowing the rules and following those rules and regulations. But what we're doing, and I'm quoting what someone said to me, is making a difference in the lives of some people, and it impacts our priorities on the impact on poverty and many other things that our employees are looking forward to experiencing. And so I want to thank you all for, not only the employees, but the residents, the services, through the services that we provide. If we didn't have the employees, we couldn't provide the services. So I want to thank you all for looking at this, and thank you for the budget process, having it in such a way that we have several times to look at it, to be able to look at it and ask questions, and I know going forward, we'll continue to do that. So thank you all very much for that.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank the city manager for his leadership and the budget staff for a budget that they've put together. I think, you know, the one thing that I guess the community needs to understand about this budget process, a lot of it, and you heard the legal language from our attorney, which we hear every year, it's determined by state statute and when public hearings are heard, how input is given into that budget, and we take that seriously. There has not been a year that I've been on this city commission that we have not taken seriously the input that we've gotten from citizens about the budget. We talk about affordable housing, we put money into affordable housing. We talk about economic development, we put money into economic development. We put money into neighborhood revitalization. We have worked with our utility customers. Those that have contacted our utility staff, they have been worked with. If they didn't have, we can't give away utilities. That's a business. It's an enterprise. And so we have worked with those individuals, especially during this pandemic. We've provided utility relief in the form of actual cash through the federal dollars that we've gotten. When the moratorium was over, we just encouraged people to call and talk with staff, and whatever their situation is, that we would work with them in terms of their utility obligation. Can we give away utilities? We can't do that. That would be unfair to the people who pay their utilities. But our goal is not to turn off people's utilities. Our goal is to work with those customers to the degree that we can to ensure that they have the utilities that they need. We, I live in a neighborhood myself with retirees and others who are on fixed incomes, and certainly, I wouldn't want to go home to my neighbors and look them in the eye and say that I didn't do everything I could to make sure that they had a safe, warm environment to go home to with respect to our utilities. None of us would want that, regardless of where we live. None of us would want that. And so we have listened to our community in terms of the input that we've gotten because we're out in the community every day, listening to what citizens have to say about what the priorities of this community should be, and I think it's reflected in our budget. We have had our budget at four-point-one mils, I think, every year but two now that I've been on the commission. That's our taxing rate, has not changed. And I've been on the commission six years now. So we, and one of the constraints that we have is we've got so much property in the city of Tallahassee off the tax roll, because we're a college town, we're a state government town, so we have constraints there. But we've tried to keep our property taxes as low as we could and still provide the quality services that citizens in this community expect. Our roads, our water, our utility, our garbage and sewage distribution, all of those services that, quality services that the residents of this community have come to expect. We've been able to maintain that, even during a pandemic, and not raise taxes and further burden our neighbors with that kind of financial burden on an annual basis. And so I'm comfortable with the budget that we have. As Commissioner Porter said, is it perfect? I don't know that there's a perfect budget anywhere that takes care of the needs of every citizen. We don't have that kind of revenue, but I think we do the best we can with what we have because we care about this community. We care about our neighbors and their lives on a daily basis, and I believe this budget reflects that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion on the table is for resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-six, made by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Curtis Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Now it is time for the approval of the DIA millage rate and budget and the resolutions. So we need a motion to approve the Downtown Improvement Authority's final millage rate of one-point-one, one-point-one mil and move for approval of resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-five.
Coming to the mayor pro tem, properly moved approval of Downtown Improvement Authority's final millage rate of one mil and move for the approval of resolution twenty-one dash R dash twenty-five.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Curtis Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Now for a motion for approval of the Downtown Improvement Authority's final fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget, which totals three hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and eleven dollars, and resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-six.
Your motion.
So move.
All right.
I was looking at our representative. I thought he.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Curtis Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. That concludes the commission's required actions on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget for the city of Tallahassee and the Downtown Improvement Authority. Finally, as a part of this agenda item, there is the consideration of the human services allocations and a request to permit the city manager or designate to execute individual agreements with nonprofit entities. Is there a motion for approval of option number three?
There is a motion for option number three on the table. Commissioner Diane Williams Cox makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Robert, job well done to you and the team. That was fantastic, and we have a balanced budget that has been passed.
You're here.
We are now, yep. On item fifteen-point-oh-two.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number fifteen-point-zero-two, zero-two is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number twenty-one dash O dash thirty, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section fourteen dash three-point-three-oh-two of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Tallahassee relating to police officers' pension contributions, providing for conflict, providing for severalability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the first and only public hearing and adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash O dash thirty.
Excellent. All right. Mr. Cook, do we have any, do we have the?
No speakers.
No speakers on this item. All right. Colleagues.
Move acceptance.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox. Is there second to the motion? Seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have anything else to come before us at the publicly scheduled public hearing?
No, Mayor.
Excellent. All right. We are now on un-agenda speakers. Mr. Mayor pro tem, I'm going to turn it to you for just a second.
Mr. Clark, the first speaker.
We do have a number of speakers, most of them here in person. I think we have one connected virtually, if that connection is still there. Our first speaker will be Stephanie Johansson, and then we'll hear from Terry Ryan. Same as with our other speakers, you'll have three minutes, and I'll give you a heads-up at two and a half.
I have my own timer, if that's okay.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stephanie Johansson. I'm a proud citizen of Tallahassee. Regarding twenty-one dash R dash thirty, it remains unclear if this commission plans to revise this resolution or is still considering a similar resolution in the future. a similar resolution in the future. What is a human person? Is a human defined by having a unique set of human DNA? At conception, the human zygote contains its own unique DNA entirely separate from that of its mother. All cells that multiply beyond this point will bear that uniqueness and separateness. Some reject this as a validation of personhood because the zygote is neither self-sustaining nor viable outside the mother's womb. Yet, we do not deny personhood to infants, children, the elderly, and those on life support who are neither self-sustaining nor viable without a caregiver. What is a human person? Is a human defined by their heartbeat or their brainwaves? An embryo's heartbeat begins at 21 days after conception, and brainwaves have been recorded at 45 days after conception. Some reject this as a validation of personhood because their heart and brain are not yet fully developed. Yet, we do not deny personhood to all humans with underdeveloped hearts or brains. The NIH says that the human brain does not finish developing and maturing until mid to late twenties. What is a human person? Throughout history, human groups of people have been arbitrarily denied their humanity or personhood, and so been denied their human rights. During American slavery, people of color were dehumanized, abused, maimed, killed, and treated as property, used or discarded at will for the benefit of true humans. During Hitler's time in power, Jews, homosexuals, the mentally handicapped, and others were dehumanized, abused, maimed, killed, and treated as parasites eradicated for the benefit of true human persons. During Jim Crow segregation, people of color were dehumanized, abused, maimed, killed, and treated as obstacles to the flourishing of true human persons or fully human persons. Commissioners, neighbors, friends, let us not be found in the company of slave owners, Nazis, and Jim Crow enthusiasts. Let us never assign or deny personhood capriciously. Let us never give approval for the unborn to be dehumanized, abused, maimed, and killed. Let us never approve treating unborn humans as the property of the mother, a parasite to be eradicated at will, or an obstacle to the flourishing and benefit of the parents in the community. What is a human person? The Bible tells us that a human is made in God's image, is known by God before they are born, is fearfully and wonderfully made, is knit together by God in the mother's womb, and is seen by God even when their body is still being formed. I hope this commission will view future resolutions through the lens of God's Word and not by ever-changing cultural whims. But here this morning, any definition of human personhood that does not begin at conception is entirely arbitrary and lacking in consistency. And anytime that the question, what is a human person, has a nebulous or ill-defined answer, then human rights will always hang in the balance. I implore the commission to answer the question, what is a human person?
That's three minutes.
In a way that glorifies God, the maker of all of us, both the born and the unborn. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Next speaker is Terry Ryan.
Good afternoon, commissioners and Mr. Mayor. Terry Ryan, co-founder of the Tallahassee Sewage and Waculla Basin advocacy group. Mr. Mayor and commissioners, as you'll recall, in November, we published an opinion article in The Democrat urging more transparency on the city's sewage collection system. At the commission meeting on July 7th, the Underground Utility Department and the Environmental Department provided some basic information on the existing DEP enforcement consent orders and their status, along with a very brief summary of 240 contaminated sites. We welcome and appreciated both departments providing this initial transparency to our citizens. Thank you very much. As an update to my comments at your last meeting before the summer recess, a recent report from the international and respected water quality analysis company, SGS in British Columbia, has confirmed the presence of human sewage in six out of six water pond samples we sent to them. As you'll recall, this was preceded by a test of 40 water bodies using industry accepted screening tools whereby approximately 80% were found to have indications of human sewage. Additionally, this past Friday, our group participated in an initial friendly meeting with the Underground Utilities Department to discuss whether city permitting would be required for us to conduct additional sewage exfiltration studies. These tests will be conducted by internationally noted FSU hydrologist Dr. Ming Yi, advising two of his graduate students to do the work. We are hoping permitting, if any, will be forthcoming soon as possible. I will keep you informed as this project continues forward to determine the extent of sewage exfiltration in our local water bodies. Lastly, in recent weeks, recent weeks, three additional environmental groups, the Friends of Waculla Springs, Apalachia Audubon Society, and the Waculla Springs Alliance individually sent letters to each of you calling for more transparency on the city's sewage collection system and contaminated sites. Respectfully, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, we ask to, we ask you to proceed forward in creating an appropriate ordinance or policy to require the commission's review and approval of future enforcement consent orders, review quarterly status reports, sewage fills over 500 gallons, and a thorough status summary of contaminated sites.
Fifteen seconds.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Next is Erwin Jackson, and then Chase Kohi.
Dr. Jackson, you want to be the last speaker tonight. I'll give you the last speaker.
Chase Kohi, and then Carlos Ramirez.
Thanks for joining us, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Chase Kohi. I live in Arbor Hill. And first of all, it is an honor to be able to speak with you, Mr. Mayor, and you commissioners. You know, it's interesting. Scripture says that ministers of the states are ministers of God. And so, I want to honor you for your office. I want to be respectful, and I want you to know that I pray for you. My wife and I prayed for all five of you this morning. I initially was coming here to speak about the abortion resolution. And so, first, I want to thank you for taking it off the table for tonight. If I understood the city attorney's comments correctly, it sounds like the resolution might be amended, but that doesn't take the abortion resolution off the table entirely. So, what I, I'm not sure why the abortion resolution was set forward. I might assume that part of it has to do with you have a concern for, as Commissioner Porter pointed out, the poor and the vulnerable, many of whom, when they are in crisis pregnancy situations, feel like they have nowhere to turn other than abortion. So, you might think that putting forward abortion is the most humane option to helping those who are in crisis pregnancies out. But I would, I would call upon the mayor and the commission not to ever put forward abortion as an option for the poor and the vulnerable and those who are in crisis pregnancies. You can talk to countless women who feel guilt and shame because of abortions that they've had because to kill your unborn baby in the womb is a sin and a guilt, it makes you guilty before a holy God. There are many other avenues to take in order to care for those in crisis pregnancy. And I would urge the mayor and the commission to take part in that. Those who would advocate adoption services, churches who would readily come alongside you and foster and adopt. If I can help in any way myself, my number is 321-576-6444. And I would be happy to help with, in that area any way I can. But also, I know it's often set forward that when we are defending abortion, we're defending the rights of women. And it is right and good to defend the rights of women because they are made in the image of God. But consider this, if you ever put an abortion resolution on the table again, at least 50% of the children that you would support being murdered in the wombs of their mothers are little girls whose rights you are ignoring. And so, I would urge the mayor and the commission to not move forward with any kind of resolution as such in the future. Again, thank you for taking it off the table tonight. I do think I have to say, though, I have to urge the five of you to repent.
You're at thirty seconds.
Thank you. For even putting it on the table to begin with because abortion is a sin before a holy God. To repent and to look to the only Savior of sinners that's provided, and that is the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlos Ramirez, and then Devin Graham.
Ramirez, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Ramirez, Carlos, Leon County. First, may the grace and peace of Christ be with you. I am totally with what the couple just brought forth. And I must say that I have no right to actually take life away. No one. I find it ironic that we would even consider such a thing while the Florida statute 828.12 says that a person who unnecessarily overloads, overdrives, torments, deprives unnecessarily of necessary sustenance or shelter or unnecessarily mutilates or kills any animal will be prosecuted. Yet, we will actually mutilate inside the womb, pull the head out and put a knife right in the back and, oof, open it and chop it up. That's what we do around here. It's disgusting. But there's a black genocide. There have been a black genocide for a long, long time. I'm sorry, guys, but I got too much information, so I gotta be quick. MAF-A21, it's a documentary. You must see it. Black genocide in the United States. You must also go to stopworldcontrol.com, healthimpactnews.com. You guys need to know that the United Nations have a plan. This is, by the way, this is not a pandemic. This is a plandemic, guys. There's, United Nations, David Spangler wrote, "The present was an overpopulation now far beyond the world carrying capacity cannot be answered by future reductions in birth rate due to contraception, sterilization, and abortion must be met in the present by the reduction of numbers presently exist, and this must be done by whatever means necessary." He also wrote, "No one will enter the new world order unless he or she will make a pledge to worship Lucifer. No one will enter the new age unless he will take a Luciferian initiation." David Spangler, director of Planetary Initiative. Revelation 1823 says that the whole world, all nations have been deceived by sorcery, which means pharmakia. Pharmakia is drugs, guys. Pharmakia is drugs. So, the pharmacy industry is lying to all of us. This is a plandemic with a plan to exterminate a lot. I have a very loved relative that just took a shot. Next thing you know, she lost her eyesight. And next thing you know, well, she almost hit the ground. There has been over 200,000 people dead now in this world through shots. Shots to the body, they don't belong there. But most of all, guys, you know, I got probably 30 seconds. Thank you, Cook. But we must seek the Lord Jesus because the devil is actually deceiving lots of us, many of us around us. Please, seek Him. The reality is that you are in a very dark world, and only He can help you. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Devon Graham, and then followed by Joseph Batavia.
Dr. Graham, good to see you. Name and address for the record, please.
Hey, Devin Graham here. Talking about the repro rights resolution, I'm disappointed that the resolution was pulled, and I hope that you'll reconsider. The majority of Floridians support reproductive rights. 65% believe that abortion should be legal. 72% believe that Roe should not be overturned. 80% believe that we should have access to safe and affordable abortion care. Just today, a bill was filed in the House that is actually worse than SB 8 out of Texas. Based on the numbers I just mentioned, access, or accesses, the access that is under attack is being attacked, is being put under attack by a very vocal minority. I know most of you know me as the American atheist chick, so of course, I'm up here. But this is also very personal for me. Once upon a time, I was an anti-abortion evangelical who was in a situation that necessitated an abortion. And I thank God every day that I had access to that. Now, as a mother of two of the greatest kids on earth, I'm still grateful for that opportunity. So, I'm asking you, as a mother, as a constituent, and one of, as one of the majority that supports repro care, that you will please reconsider and support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, our next speaker.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Yes, next is Joseph Batavia.
Batavia, thank you for staying with us. We appreciate it. Again, name and address for the record, please.
My address is private. My name is Joseph Batavia. I'm a proud United States citizen, all the way from Russia to the United States. Who knows section 504 of 1974, where Black Panthers, Martin Luther King Jr., and the disability activists fought to make 74 possible for disabled people. I'm a disabled person. 2016, I was supposed to be a father. But because killing two lives would have been murder. But because the person had, person had a problem, we decided to have an abortion. I'm thankful to have now Nakapenda Sana Sana, Ms. Cox, because you're from Africa. Is that true? Is your nationality from Africa?
No, sir. I'm from Quincy.
I'm sorry.
Okay, never mind. What I'm saying is, I was blessed with the son. I have a mixed nationality, too. My cousin served the Navy. He's a mixed white, black, and Chinese. People fighting these days, past two years, we're not supporting section 504 for businesses.
I'm tired of discrimination. I'm tired of public servants violating the ADA. We're all, we're talking about the Lord. We're talking about God's children. We're all God's children. You're my brothers and sisters in America. But my nation as Russian is being destroyed, too. Other nations in the world is being destroyed. Thank God, we brought our brothers and sisters back from Iraq. Hallelujah. Because the truth is, and rest in peace to other ones, because we lost a lot. People don't understand what the flag really represents. Pledge allegiance, the oath, constitution that I sworn as a child. But the thing is, I don't remember the children as a child. I remember now, as now, that I, as me talking to you, Mr. Mayor, that's my oath that I'm telling you right now. And if anybody decides to violate our constitution, our liberty is in jeopardy. Our United States is in jeopardy. Our youth of the nation, I fight for. You guys want to play these games? Please give me a federal United States attorney so I could violate all their laws so they could go and be on the street. Because we pay tax dollars, no matter if we're buying groceries or buying a soda pop. We are paying to make sure these public servants are supporting us. But the problem is, Mr. Mayor, if I keep hearing, oh, I work for myself. Wrong. You're a public servant. I'm not a public servant, but I am serving the Lord. So, I guess I am a public servant, but in a different way. I don't get paid tax dollars. I'm a disabled person, got funded by my father to make sure his son and his daughter would not go through the suffering. But the thing is, I love my people, and I don't want them to go through suffering.
You're at 30 seconds.
That's all I got to say. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. You have a good day.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is John Maurer, and followed by Lauren Brunzel.
Maurer, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is John Harris Maurer, 201 East Park Avenue, Tallahassee 32301. I'm a Tallahassee resident and also the Public Policy Director for Equality Florida. Equality Florida is the state's largest LGBTQ organization dedicated to securing full equality for Florida's LGBTQ community. Equality Florida urges you to reconsider and adopt the resolution protecting reproductive freedom, including abortion. Equality Florida has long recognized that the fight for LGBTQ equality and reproductive freedom are causes in common. Both are based on foundational principles about freedom from governmental intrusion into our most intimate decision-making about our private lives, about how and when we structure our families. And the same opponents who seek to undermine LGBTQ equality are the ones who oppose the freedom and bodily autonomy of people seeking this sort of reproductive care. This resolution is a tangible and important message about the city of Tallahassee valuing the full range of reproductive care, from family planning services to abortion, prenatal care, service, labor and delivery services, and postnatal care. Just today, across the street, a measure was introduced to effectively ban abortion before most people even know that they're pregnant. And it even incentivizes citizens to prosecute each other with individualized bounties. We know that abortion restrictions fall most harshly on the communities that are already experiencing barriers to healthcare. People who are low income, people with disabilities, young people, and immigrants. This resolution is about protecting those communities of interest. Please bring this resolution back, and we hope that the city of Tallahassee will pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Lauren Brunzel, and then Delilah Pierre.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Lauren Brunzel. We've actually had some folks that I'm scared to give my address in front of, so I won't be doing that. I'm here today to speak as a Tallahassee citizen. It's a very scary time to be somebody who can get pregnant right now. Even though the vast majority of people in this country support Roe v. Wade, we have legislators right next door trying to pass a six-week ban right now. This bill that they just proposed doesn't include exceptions for sexual assault survivors. And I woke up today, and I saw that news as a survivor of sexual assault, and I was proud to live in this city. I was excited to see my city affirm access to this safe, legal, and important healthcare. So, I'm hoping that we can come to a resolution with the attorney. I know that similar resolutions have passed with... I know that similar resolutions have passed without issue in Miami Beach, in Fort Lauderdale, and in other places across our state, because I know that we, as a city, value citizens' rights. We value access to safe and affordable healthcare. We value our women, and we value people who can get pregnant, and we know that they need safe and legal abortions in our state. I don't want to come here and have to fight for this right in my city. I think we're better than this, and I really hope that the resolution was based on a legal issue and not pressure from extremists, some of whom we've seen here today peddling their conspiracy theories about abortion. I thank you for your time. I value you as a commission, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Clerk, our next speaker.
And then Nick Dorella, who's our last speaker in person, but we do have one connected.
Thanks for sticking around and joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Delilah Pierre. I will not be giving my address.
President.
Okay. So you know it's a sin. A sin is that in this country, the richest country in the world, black women are three times more likely to die from childbirth. A sin in this country is that the majority of people living in poverty in this country are women with children. A sin in this country is the fact that as much as these people, these right-wing extremists like to talk about how they care about freedom and individual liberty of people and don't want anyone to die and be hurt, they're totally okay with stand-your-ground laws that allow for black and brown people to be shot with no consequence. They're totally okay with HB one, a law that allows for people to literally run over, injure, or attack protesters without any harm. They're okay with these reactionary bills that kill poor people, that kill women, but they're not okay with this one bill. They're not okay with the right of women to have abortions, of pregnant people to have abortions. And what really gets me is abortions will still be legal and accessible to anyone who has the money to fund it. Abortions will still be legal and accessible to anyone who is rich or wealthy. All banning abortion in the state of Florida is going to do is make it so that poor people, people who can barely afford abortions, won't have help and won't have the care they need. And as much as they talk about caring about people, about doing their little individual volunteering, we all know what's gonna happen. The hungry mouse, the food, the poverty that these families and communities will be facing because they don't have access to abortion, is going to lead to malnourishment. It's going to lead to malnutrition. It's going to lead to poor education and poor access, because no one's really gonna step up and do anything for those kids, and we know it. We know full well what's going to happen when we don't actually come up with a real solution to this issue. You are all, to my knowledge, Democrats. This should be something you should absolutely be standing for. This is something you have to fight for. You must put that abortion resolution on the table. It needs to be something that Tallahassee fights for, because we've already seen all these reactionary bills being passed in Florida. We've already seen all these bills being passed in Florida that limit our ability to talk about race in schools, the ability of trans children to get the right access to healthcare they need, and pretty much nothing has been done on behalf of the local city. So I would really appreciate it if y'all would step up just this one time to support something that is very obviously just.
Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Nick Dorella. I live at one six nine Locke Street. I've lived in Tallahassee for fourteen years. I moved here in two thousand and seven. I went to Florida State University for four years. I worked at Florida State University for nine and a half years, and now I work for the state of Florida. I believe that that's a story that you've probably heard many times. Many of you probably have experienced that. And so I love this town. I love the state of Florida. That's why I've lived here for so long. And I'm here to tell you that I'm disappointed that the abortion resolution was not put on the agenda today, and I'm even more disappointed that it was not passed today. I don't support a lack of abortion access. A lack of abortion access will have a large toll on the health and well-being of the residents in Tallahassee. And just as an example of why people that are against abortion do not care about our health and do not care about our well-being, in Tallahassee, multiple pregnant women have died due to complications of COVID. And people are coming up here and saying that COVID's a plandemic, that abortion is evil. Well, I don't see them standing up for these women who died because they were pregnant and because they got COVID, and they didn't get the access to healthcare that they needed at the time that they needed it. They're now dead. Their children are gonna live their entire lives without their mothers. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, we have one speaker connected via WebEx, and that is Martin McLama. I do see the name, so apparently there's a connection. We can make sure the speaker's unmuted, and give just a minute to make sure that connection Martin McLama, are you there and ready to speak?
One more time.
Martin McLama, and that's the only speaker we have connected virtually, Mayor, so if we don't get that connection, then we're, we only have Erwin Jackson in chambers.
All right, let's move on. Dr. Jackson, bring us home. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dr. Erwin Jackson. My address, thirteen forty-one Jackson Bluff. Before I begin, I have an administrative question. Mr. Mayor, I came in here today thinking, as a citizen, I could come in here and speak before the City Commission. I learned differently and disappointed. I spent a lot of money to put together a little brochure here. This is free speech. I think this is a free speech sort of place to be. I asked to have this information presented on the big screens so the folks at home watching could have the same opportunity that you have to see my little brochure picture. It's factual. If someone doesn't like what it says, they want to sue me, they have a right to do that. I wouldn't be opposed to that. It's disappointing, though, when I'm told by the clerk that, as a citizen, I have to come in and submit this to the almighty government, and then have the government approve what I want to talk about, and then I have to come back a couple days later to come in here to get it up on a big screen. Now, I've gone through the kill switch with John Marks, but actually, this is as bad or worse than the kill switch. So I would ask that this commission figure out if we're gonna have a silencing of citizens, if we're heading backwards, or if we're heading forward, because if this doesn't get changed, then this is something I'm willing to fight for.
Dr. Jackson, before you get started, you asked me at the break about the camera, and we have no idea why the camera's not in here. We'll reevaluate the policy. That policy decision was made before any of us were elected, so we need to take a look at it, and we'll bring it back. But for the purposes of this evening, I'm sorry the camera's not in place, I can't help you.
I understand that.
But I appreciate you handing it out.
I felt pretty comfortable, but it was a misunderstanding, and no one of the commissioners here would want to take away my right to speak.
Of course not.
Thank you very much. The other thing I want to say and ask, I've spent ten years trying to identify of my life corruption in City Hall. I have a little presentation I want to make. It may run five minutes.
I'll give you five.
I think I should get five. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
You're the last speaker, let's go.
That's why I asked to be last. I didn't want to interrupt the other people that had a particular issue they wanted to Commissioners, ten years ago, I came here with this sign, right here. It's pretty clear. The folks in the background. How to make millions as mayor of Tallahassee, land deals, lobbying loopholes, and looking the other way. Well, we know who this guy was. I told you ten years ago that he was a crook. I'm telling you ten years, eight, ten years ago, that this guy, John Marks, is a crook. And they made lots of money through these things. Lobbying, we heard about that, land deals, hotel deals, loopholes. And one thing I want to talk about today is there was a lot of folks sitting up there on the City Commission that were just willing to look the other way. I was right. And now everyone in Leon County knows I was right. Now citizens ask me, how did, how did Scott Maddox get away with this for so long? I tell them he had friends in high places, and he had many others who were happy to just look the other way. During these ten years, not a single politician, law enforcement officer, senior city manager, administrator, ever contacted me, asking to see the evidence I had, to ask me to explain to them. And this was information of corruption that has controlled the mayor's office for the past twenty years, through Maddox's administration, Marks's administration, and Gillum's administration. It was so much easier for folks up here and folks behind me to simply look the other way. For example, Reese Gold was asked to investigate his boss, Rick Fernandez, not too many years ago, to see if a bribe was offered and accepted. Reese concluded that an FSU box only cost ninety-nine dollars instead of what I had to pay this past year was a thousand dollars per seat. Why? Because he was a team player, and a hundred-dollar finding would have initiated investment of Rick Fernandez. Instead, Fernandez was paid off by this commission, and Reese was promoted, thanks to his buddy, Scott Maddox. And everyone, you got it, looked the other way. Commissioner Gil Ziffer, he asked if, that I not approach him before the City Commission because when the cameras are on, it'd be bad for his political future. Nancy Miller told me that it wasn't her part of her job to monitor and help expose unethical and corrupt actions by her fellow commissioners. Commissioner Curtis Richardson said he never saw any clouds of corruption, and he may still not. Looking the other way continues today. I gave you this brochure. It outlines my concern today. Gary Jordan, a lobbyist registered by the city, admitted guilt in a federal court under oath to extortion of local businesses for funds to bribe a city commissioner, Scott Maddox. As of last week, Gary Jordan remained a registered lobbyist who can come and argue before this City Commission. How does this happen? Who's looking the other way? Mr. Jordan should never be allowed to lobby before this commission, and he should never be awarded another city contract. Now, that Scott Maddox is going to prison, I've listened to several politicians, and they're all saying they're either being quiet, or they're saying, thank goodness, it's over, now let's just move on. I'm telling you, that's wrong. It is not time that we move on. It's time that we get serious about the crime problem we have in City Hall. My goal over the past ten years has been to expose the corruption that has held a death grip on our community for twenty years during the Maddox, Marks, and Gillum administration. Our community will see several more trials, and with a little luck, I will achieve my goal of the perfect trifecta, sending our last three mayors to prison. Over the past ten years, it's become apparent to me that every crooked politician has a bagman or woman, someone who could shake down citizens and businesses for bribes and contributions. For example, John Marks, when mayor, had Sean Pittman, and then Scott Maddox, when mayor, had his girlfriend Paige, and Gary Jordan, an ex-county commissioner. And Andrew Gillum, when mayor, he had Sean Pittman and Adam Corey. Now let me tell you the worst secret in City Hall. Campaign managers raise money because individuals want access and favor from elected politicians. If successful, the campaign manager then becomes the bagman. We need to come up with a system which will prevent this from occurring. After the election, the elected official figures out a way to funnel hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars to the campaign managers. If you don't believe me, look up how many, the amount of money in city contracts that has been given to Sean Pittman, Gary Jordan, Drew Jones, Paige Smith, with governance, Adam Corey, and several other lobbyists over the last ten years. This unhealthy relationship has to be stopped.
Mayor, that's six minutes.
It's time that this commission form a committee headed by maybe the ethics officer with city representations, and I'll certainly volunteer to come up with a way to stop this process. We need to stop campaign managers from becoming bagmen for elected officials. We need to stop elected officials from using city funds to pay off their campaign managers, and we need to establish more aggressive financial disclosure for the mayor, commissioners, and senior staff. This would include sources of income, business, and real estate. Now in summary, why do we need more financial disclosures? Let me tell you. Not long ago, Christian Dozier, county commissioner, voted to give millions of dollars to now convicted felon J.T. Burnett, who showed his appreciation by selling her a house at a, quote, "special for her only price." I've also recently learned this city commissioner Matlow has a business rental contract with J.T. Burnett for his pizza business. Now I hope this relationship has been disclosed publicly. These conflicts should serve only as examples of things that should be avoided by all elected officials and senior staff at best, or at least reported to determine whether they are unethical or illegal. Honest individuals who want to serve the community are not afraid of disclosing details of money earned while serving as the public.
Dr. Jackson, if you could wrap up.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Hey, look, it's obviously no big secret that you have brought a lot of information before this community that went to trial, and yes, there was convictions, and there are people going to federal prison. I think I can speak for my colleagues, and of course, we'll all speak as well under our time, that we have made great strides here at this commission with this elected body, and things that I think that you'd be very pleased with. You mentioned the full financial disclosure. That was part of the ethics package that we did pass. We do disclose down to the penny debt and assets, and we list all sources of income on an annual basis. That was not required from municipal government, and we've done that now since we have passed it, and that's public knowledge. You can go check, you can go check it out, so. Okay. Okay, okay. We can do that, but we do have, Dr. Jackson, I'm not gonna carry on the conversation here, We will, we can go through all of that. We have also been working with our inspector general's office to go through those contracts that were established under the previous commissions as well, that Scott was involved with, and that's currently being audited and brought back, correct? Mr. Sutton?
Excellent.
So yeah, we'd love to work with you and keep moving forward, but I think you should be pleased with some of the action that we've initially taken, and we'll continue to do so. With that, that ends public comment on non-agenda, non-agenda items. We'll open it up for commission discussion. Commissioner Porter, work our way this way. Any items to bring before us?
Nothing for me.
All right. Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say happy birthday to Cameron Davis, who is the daughter of Dr. Tawanda Davis in my office. She turns eighteen today. She's a proud student at Purdue University, and Mom's going up to take her out for her birthday tomorrow. So I want to wish her a happy birthday. Also, I had an opportunity today to visit the Veterans Success Center over at TCC, and it's, I don't know how much of a secret it is, but it was a secret to me, and I don't want it to be a secret anymore. Veterans, veterans and their families have access to this facility over at TCC. It's in the computer technology suite, or building, in room two oh eight. The coordinator is Danny James, and you should get in touch with them if you need the services that they're providing there, and it helps vets who are returning home to be able to work through getting a college education. education and getting access to those services. The number there is 850-201-9812. I also learned while I was there, there's going to be a virtual reality showcase where you put on the headsets and be able to see stuff in virtual reality on September 29th in the Learning Commons from 11:00 to 2:00 at TCC. And also in the Learning Commons is having an open house at that same time. So great things are going on in the city of Tallahassee, and especially at TCC. So I had a chance to get by there to meet Ms. Karen Moore and Mr. Richard Moore, so who are the benefactors of this Veterans Success Center. And so I hope that we will, our community will utilize this facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
I have nothing today, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three things I wanted to discuss. The first one directly to Dr. Jackson's comments. Frankly, I think our city owes you a debt of service. I don't agree with every point that you make, I don't agree, I think our politics are probably widely different, but had it not been for the constant beating of the drum that you did bring forward, the indictments that we saw probably never would have happened. So you've raised some questions. One, you ask JT Burnett is an investor in a business property that I own, he's not my direct contact, we use a property management company, and there is no way, nowhere for me to properly disclose who our companies pay money to. If that's something that needs to be addressed, I think certainly it can be, but I will say, you get no favors by criticizing your landlord publicly. I've been critical of JT, I've been critical of Tao Core's campaign contributions stacked repeatedly, also my landlord. I've been critical of our city manager in 2019 for some of the dealings that you mentioned. I've been critical of my colleagues' campaign managers as well. None of these things are easy or give you special, you know, special privilege. I'd wager it makes things a lot more difficult for me to do my job up here, but I do agree there's a sense that these indictments and these guilty pleas means we're done, and we move on to happier pastures. I do think we still have problems in our community, I do think we still have problems in our local government, and I do think we still, we aren't turning the page unless we address those properly. So I've laid out some proposals of mine that I think we should take up as a city commission, but you bring up a point of should we establish a commission led by the ethics officer to do more thorough recommendations and really weed out some of these details. I wholeheartedly agree with that. If I do anything in elected office, it's going to be to fix this system in the city of Tallahassee. So I support that recommendation, and if there's support of my colleagues, I'll make a motion that we bring back an item establishing a citizens committee, commission, to make additional recommendations to protect the public interest of the citizens of Tallahassee.
I have a question.
Yeah, let's, can we open this up for discussion, Commissioner Matlow?
Sure.
All right. Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, and Commissioner Porter.
I guess my question is, how would this group be different from the Ethics Board that is covered in our charter, and was voted on by the citizens of the city of Tallahassee? And the other thing that I will say too is that, Dr. Jackson, in all due respect, thank you for the service that you provided and the things that you exposed, but ethics is not something that you legislate or beat out of folks. People have just got to be good to the core, you can do all the things that you want to do to them, and you still can't make them ethical. It has to be, it has to be within, you got to have some moral compass for this to happen. So I'm trying to understand, how much more can we do? I'm at the point now where if someone offers me a bottle of water, I've got to refuse it, because I can't take it. And then we have this rippling down to our lowest level employees that can't take anything from anyone, even if it's almost as bad as voter suppression, can't give people water in the voting line. It's, where does this stop? We have our inspector general, who is working diligently on many of the things that has been, that you, Commissioner Matlow, has mentioned already in the press. So I'm just trying to figure out, I am down to the bone marrow. Where does this go? And I believe in dealing with the people who commit the crime, but if you haven't committed a crime, why do you have to continuously be drugged through the mud every time a verdict comes down, or every time someone makes an accusation? I'm just trying to live a simple life and serve the public. And so I don't appreciate me lumped into, into stuff that I had nothing to do with. I've come here to try to serve, and I'm diligent, and I'm trying to do that, trying to follow all of the rules. I won't take any other work, Dr. Jackson. I only do city commission work. I could be somewhere making some money, but I can't, because I don't trust people trying to set me up. And so I just do city commission work and live how we live with that. So what more is expected of me to give? And that's not, that's a rhetorical question, that's not to you. I'm just saying, what else do we need to do?
Hold on, I don't, we're on Commissioner Matlow's time.
Yeah.
And so, number one, I don't want to get into, work with me? Yeah. After the meeting.
What more, what more can we, what more can I give to prove that I'm an ethical person? You can trust me, I'm doing what I can. I've exposed my student loan debt, I've exposed, you know, my mortgages. What else do I need to do? Give up my firstborn?
Right. Commissioner Matlow, I got Commissioner Porter in line to speak, but it's your turn. It's your time.
Sure.
We're on your commission time.
Just to speak to that, and I understand wholeheartedly where you're coming from. You know, you show up here, like me, I believe, and most of us, all of us, to do the right thing, you know, for our community. But I think the questions that are being addressed isn't saying any of the five of us are guilty. We know a previous city commissioner was guilty, and how do we put the tools in the place to make it easier for the public to spot that? You know, we talk about the relationships between campaign consultants and getting official city contracts. We saw that happen, I don't think that should have happened. How do we put a rule in the place to say, hey, that happened in the past, we're not going to do those sorts of things anymore? And they might not even be happening right now, but how do we set the city up in its best posture and policies going forward? So, you know, when my term limit runs up, because I'm not going to be here for 20 years, that we set up good policies moving forward. So when I hear, you know, my recommendations speak to things that I saw directly that I think we could have tightened up and have more scrutiny on, the reason I make the motion today is, I'm only one person, and I only talk to like six or seven other people, so if there's more community ideas that can be consulted by a thorough commission, it's not saying we have to adopt everything they recommend. I don't know what they would recommend and what would be valuable, but I'm committed to getting all the ideas possible, so we truly start a new day, we put our best foot forward. And like you, I don't have anything to hide, I'm not scared of any recommendations that come out, because I think it's invaluable to the public trust to say, we're going to do whatever we need to do to turn the page and move forward.
So my question was, before I went into mayor, what is the difference between what you're proposing and the Ethics Board?
Or our inspector general.
Or what the inspector general's office is doing? And I've had conversations with the inspector general on what he's doing, and maybe we need an update on what it is that he's doing to remind us that we've already put some things in place.
Yes.
So maybe we just need a reminder.
I think it would be the same as in any citizen board or commission that we've established to go out and really do the legwork, talk to the community, and bring ideas back. You know, there's a very specific mission of the Independence Ethics Board. I know we received some documentation today that they've requested expanded authority, particularly over lobbyists. That's something I support, they made some other recommendations, but that's their job as an independent ethics board, and if we're being candid, they've been criticized in the past, they've been criticized by this very body. I think they are a tool that can be useful in providing recommendations, but I also think if there are people in the public that want to join a committee and make suggestions for us to consider, I don't object to that. I'm fine going down that path. I don't think it's, it comes to a point where, you know, we're locking up people for taking a bottle of water who are picking up your trash, but if they're, you know, our common sense things we can do, like, you know, like if you're a campaign consultant, you also can't be the blueprint consultant, and you can't work for the developers at the same time. I think that's just common sense reforms that we got to be able to make to put our best foot forward.
And what is, again, what is the relationship to, and I'm looking at Madam Attorney, we have a charter that the citizens voted on what they want the Ethics Board to do. So we, and I'm not afraid of it either, you know, Commissioner Matlow, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying, we need to remember what we've already set in place so that we don't have duplication of effort, and we don't have, we don't give people false hope by putting them on a committee that another board is already doing it, is already being handled. So that's what I'm trying to say. Mr. Mayor, I know the time is far spent, but can we perhaps get the inspector general to come and remind us of the things, ethics, in the ethics arena that he is working on, and working with the committee on?
Hold on just a second, Mr. Sutton, if you don't mind. Mr. Matlow, I'm, I'll come back to you in just a second.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams Cox. Mr. Matlow, it is your time, do you have anything else you want to finish up with? Sounds good. I will use my time. I'm very hesitant to have conversations and get into detail about campaign consultants' impacts on public and private and business relationships right now, but why don't you bring us up to speed and let us know exactly where we are with your office? Because I know that you're very busy with some very important work that we have tasked you with.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner William Cox. The audit that we have been charged to work on is a two-part audit. The first part that we're aware of is working on the statement of facts that Scott Maddox admitted to. Before I begin that, I want to remind everybody that I'm not independent of the City Commission, my office is not independent of the City Commission. So this audit will not cover any actions that a city commissioner made while as a city commissioner. That being said, the audit looks at city staff, and what did city staff do or not do in relation to those items in the statement of facts? And did they conduct those actions and items within the power of their authority? And did it make sense? Was it reasonable what city staff did based on what was known and what was admitted by Scott Maddox? Second part of that audit deals with city efforts to anti-corruption efforts. What are best practices that the city can look for in the future to implement to prevent future corruption type incidents? And that's going to look at best practices worldwide. And so that's the second part of the audit that we're working on.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Sutton. And with that, I think we will all be anticipating the work that your office will complete. We appreciate that. I have nothing else.
I have two other items, I'm sorry.
Well, we've moved on to my time, that's why I asked if you had anything else. Mayor Pro Tim, if you could, please, let's wrap this up.
All right. The second one is, we had a great presentation while Reneta was still with us on what they were doing with the sewage collection, and I thought we had a very productive conversation and learned a lot. One issue was raised that, I know this consent order is coming to an end, but to set an official policy in the future, if any consent orders, we enter into any to bring that back before the City Commission for review and approval, and also approve any major spills in our community on a consent item. So I think that was a fair ask or request by the Wacola Springs Alliance and everybody engaged to just have that brought back to us for our attention. In the event, hopefully this never happens in the future, but in the event it does, we have a policy saying it would come to the City Commission. So I would move that we bring back an agenda item to discuss a policy for any time we enter into a consent order, or to review and approve those consent orders at the City Commission level.
I'll second that.
Motion is on the table made by Mayor Pro Tim to bring back policy regarding DEP consent orders that impact the city and bringing it to the commission for acceptance. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, second by Commissioner Porter. Any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who pass as you name, say 5-0. Last item, Commissioner.
Lastly, to our public speakers, I wholeheartedly support the right to choose and look forward to that officially coming back. I'm not sure what needs to be tweaked on it, but I support it and still continue to support adopting that resolution. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, I'm going to close out my section by saying once again, for the first time in the history of the city of Tallahassee, we are over the billion-dollar mark for our budget. Our budget team did an absolutely tremendous job putting together this budget and this budget process, and I want to thank them for all the hard work that they have done. With that, it is 6:46.
Mr. Mayor, I had my hands up when Commissioner Matlow was speaking.
Commissioner Porter, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We're done, okay? Is this just a quick comment, because?
Well, I had my hand up, and Commissioner Williams Cox.
I understand, I decided to move forward and close out with my comments. Do you have a quick comment?
I would really appreciate the opportunity to direct my question to Commissioner Matlow. I think the spirit of sharing ideas, I did not take my own time.
Right.
I would really appreciate the opportunity to ask my question.
Okay. We stand adjourned.